Okay, so I'd like to call to order the County Township of Canton Board of Trustees meeting on March 2nd, 2021 for our study session. So Clerk Seagres, can you please call everyone to order?
Trustee Borninski.
I am here and I'm in Canton Township.
Foster.
I'm here in Canton Township.
Anguli.
Good evening, I'm here and I'm in Canton Township.
Graham Hudek.
Good evening, I'm here in Canton Township.
Reciproflective Clerk Seagres is in attendance and he is in Canton Township. Slavens.
Good evening and I'm in Canton Township.
Anne Snyderman.
I am here in Canton Township.
Thank you. Can I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
Some move.
Support.
Thank you, Clerk Seagres. Please call roll on the motion.
Foster. Borninski.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
I'm Hudek.
Aye.
Anguli.
Aye.
Seagres, I Slavens.
Aye.
Snyderman.
Aye.
Great, thank you. So the study session is now in order. The first person is Diane Slavens. She's going to just talk about the certificate. Diane, do you want me to share the screen?
Yeah, if you don't mind. And if you could unmute my deputy.
I don't think my microphone's working, so I'll just stay in here.
Okay, he's gonna stay.
Come in here? Okay. Let me share the screen then.
Alrighty.
Before I share. Alright, come on, screen share. A lot of other things are popping up right now. There we go.
I had sent this out last week. It's the last quarterly investment report. Just wondering if anybody has any questions regarding this? We will be bringing the, we're reviewing or revising the investment policy. So we will be bringing that to you in April with the next quarterly report. So if you have any questions, we can answer it now. We can answer them later. You can give me a call.
As always, it's in low-risk type of investments, I believe.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, they're strict guidelines, so absolutely.
So it's two pages here and here's kind of the fun names right here.
And this includes any bond monies, I think. That was the, I saw the columns to the right.
The bond money, you're talking about the recent bond. Yeah, that is in just our regular checking account right now. Not real, not really a lot of sense in investing bond monies because of arbitrage. And we don't want to make that much interest on it because we just have to pay it back if we go over. So it's keeping the checking account will help us use the earnings credit against our other banking fees. So it's a good place to keep it for right now.
Thanks, Bruce.
Great. Any other questions? Nope. Alright, thank you, Bruce.
I was just gonna just say real quick, this, what you're looking at, there's background for everything we're investing. There's a huge spreadsheet. Anyone ever wants to see that or need something explained on there? We would be happy to sit with you and do that.
Okay, great. So you would have like under municipal bonds, you'd have a listing of all the municipal bonds under that.
Probably somewhere between 15 to 20 municipal bonds, probably around 30 to 40. Agency bonds, 20 to 30 CDs. So yeah, there's, it all breaks down and it's, you know, there's different maturities and different amounts.
So do you purchase the municipal bonds yourself or do you go through a brokerage firm?
Brokerage, yep, everything. The only, we have a, we have a municipal rep with every bank we work with. So we could, the only thing we could purchase ourselves is, would be like a CD, a regular CD, a bank CD.
Okay.
Everything else would require a broker.
Okay, great. Any other questions? Any other comments, Bruce?
Nope.
Okay, great. Alright.
Thank you.
Diane, thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Yep.
Okay, so now we will move to Wendy, Director Wendy Trumbull, to talk about the preliminary budget summary, budget detail. And you'll basically lead it for us, Wendy. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much, everybody. It's the exciting time of year where we talk about a bunch of numbers. So I hope you guys had lots of coffee leading up into this. With, very good, Stephen. With me from the finance department on here, who's been promoted to a panelist, is Carolyn Cox. Carolyn spends a lot of time getting the budget up and ready to go. So we start this process and I, we talked about this at the Canton 101 early. So finance starts the budget process by updating all of the current employee salary and fringes. And that's a significant part of our cost. So we start with that process, roll out and get the people cost input. And once we get the people cost input, it gets basically opened up to all of the different directors to enter all of the functional areas that they are responsible for. They look at their people, you know, as long as they're not changing their headcount or doing anything with the people costs. Their people costs have been established by the finance department by looking at their, what the union increases are that are already contractual. Or, you know, any other, anything other that's contractual as far as fringe benefits that go along with the contracts. And from there, the department spends some time putting in their budgets. Finance also puts in the property taxes and revenue sharing and that kind of, that kind of stuff. And then, once the department's in it, it comes back to the finance department. We kind of do a historical analysis, look to see where there's unusual things from the past. Make sure everything's documented in the system. Supervisor Graham Hudek then looked at the budget after that. We talked about some of the changes in there. And then it gets presented to, to the board. And at this point in time, we're not asking the board to adopt anything. At this point in time, it's just kind of the guide at this point in time. Our starting point of where we think at this point in time today, we would expect, expect the budget to be. There will be changes throughout the year before we ask the board to adopt it in November. You know, based on board goals, based on emergencies that come up and things just change. So this is a snapshot in time that we're looking at. And obviously, if things change throughout the year and the board would like things changed, additions, subtractions. This is again, just kind of the starting point where, with where the directors and the full-time electants for their departments would like to go. So we're gonna start, for those of you who have been part of this in the past, it's very similar to the past. I'm gonna open it up right now and go through some of the overall budget assumptions. After I go through the budget assumptions, I will open it up to the different directors to do their presentations. And once their presentations are all wrapped up, I'll circle back and do an overall summary of what this means as far as overall expenditures for the different funds, where we think fund balance will be as a result of what we are presenting tonight. And then, obviously, ask any questions as they come up. It'll probably be easier to ask them throughout each individual director's presentation. So with that, I'm gonna share my screen to just go through a couple of the assumptions. Can everybody see that? Okay, very good. Okay, that's just the title screen, so I can move past that. So the revenue assumptions for the 2022 budget, I assumed that the millage rates that were currently assessed are not changing. We're not putting in an increase in the millage or a decrease in the millage rates. We do know that the increase in taxable value is approximately 1.4% for existing properties. The state of Michigan determines what that inflation factor would be. And that has already been established. It's based on their September year end. So the inflation factor for September 30th of last year, which is the inflation factor that will be used for our next year taxes, is 1.4%. However, with the new construction as well, our property taxes can go up higher. So our property taxes can only go up by inflate, the lesser of inflation by 5%, except it can also go up for new construction on top of that. So we're estimating the total property tax increase to be 2.4% with the new construction. It's probably conservative based on what's happened in the past. But when we take a look at where we think the permits are gonna be and where the property tax values will be on the new construction, that's where, that's where we estimated it to be. The state revenue sharing, we conservatively estimated that to increase at 2%. And why I say conservatively, I think, for those of you who have been reading up on the state, I actually think they said about a 2% increase. So it doesn't sound like that's conservative. That sounds like what the state's kind of projecting or expecting. However, there is a census adjustment that's coming this summer, which we have not factored into the budget yet. So I would fully anticipate that before we adopt the final budget, I would be amending the revenues up for the final adoption for the state shared revenue. But for this purposes, I increased it at 2%. And the other revenues, those are the two primary revenues in, in all of the funds, really, except for the water and sewer rates. You know, they're separate. But our property taxes and state shared revenue are the significant revenue. However, and Director Smith will talk about this when he gets into his area. The other large revenue, which can only be spent for its individual purpose, is the permit fees that come in. Permit fees are a big chunk of our revenue as well. We conservatively budget that. I'll let Director Smith get into that. But again, we can't use any revenue we collect on, permit fees have to be spent for the building department costs. So we can't use that to subsidize other departments. As far as the expenditure assumptions on the big ones, we have all of the wage increases at whatever the current contracts require for 2022. For those that are not budgeted or as part of a contract, so the non-union employees, we put in as a 2% full-time wage increase. Again, that is just a placeholder to account for the increase in the budget. That official increase will come back to the board for actual approval before any wage increase would go for the non-union employees. As far as the large fringe benefit costs, our pension costs, we're expecting to increase by about 10% based on information we've received from MERS. And based on information we've received from our third-party administrators, we're estimating the medical and prescription drug costs to go up by 8% per year. Again, for the OPEB funding, for the medical, that's another large one, our retiree healthcare, we assume those medical costs would be 8%. And we added $1 million to pre-fund our OPEB, which has been our, what we've done historically. It's been kind of our stance on that to try to get that caught up a little bit. So I, or stuff that.
Wendy?
Yeah.
Historically, have our pension costs gone up that much every year?
It varies. It depends on when new, MERS looks at their assumptions. And they look at their assumptions every five years and their act, their experience study, they call it an experience study that they do. And based on their experience, people are living longer, so it is going up. And then they also reduced their interest rate assumptions. So if you recall, they used to have an interest rate earnings assumption of like 7 and 3/4%. They went from 8 to 7 and 3/4 and now they dropped it to 7.35%. So when you lower the interest they're expecting to earn, it's gonna increase our contributions that we have to, that we have to pay to them. So actuarial valuation, it shows the estimated cost increases and the difference between 2021 and 2022 is a 10% overall increase. So with that, I have other stuff to show you guys. I've got capital, I've got the overall summaries. But I don't want to rain or step on anybody else's parade and get into what other directors are gonna cover. So with that, I'm gonna stop sharing my screen for now, if I can figure out where the share screen is. And I'm gonna turn it over to Director Smith. I believe he's gonna lead off the, with the MSD department. If he's here.
Yes, I'm here. So, okay, Emory, could we, oh, perfect. So we got Brad Bills, should be Rob as well. I think he was there. Perfect, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen as well and go through the MSD overall budget. I know you guys see the wrong screen. You guys do not see the PowerPoint, is that correct?
We can see the PowerPoint, yep.
You can, okay. Okay, so on the call tonight, we also have the management team from MSD, which is consistent of Bradleyer, who is the DPW manager, Bill Surcheck, the engineering manager, Patrick Sloan, the community planner, and Rob Kramer, who is the building official and supervises the building and inspection services department. So if there's any questions as we move throughout this presentation, I don't have a super long presentation because I want to make sure that there's room and opportunity for questions. And I'm gonna hit more on the expenses than I am the revenues. But again, if there's more question on that revenue, because we balance our budget to our revenues and with the exception of some of our specialized funds like water and sewer and sanitation. So as Wendy alluded to, back in November is when we started our 20, in November of 2020 is when we started to look at our 2022 budget. So there's quite a bit of time that goes between when we create this budget to when we're presenting it tonight. And then with the new strategic goals of the board in the township, what will end up being presented in November. So everything is pretty status quo, but I already know that there are gonna be some changes that we bring before you later this year. And I'll touch on those as we move through this process tonight as well. First thing I'd like to go over is our staffing. MSD is made up of 73 and a half employees or 73 full-time employees and a, and a part-time employee. And you can see how the breakdown is here within administration, DPW, building, engineering, and planning. And actually, this is, the 73 and a half employees is, is static number. This has not changed since the 2021 budget as well. So we're not looking at any changes there. So our overall breakdown of our budget, and I apologize, I don't know why this is looking like this. This wasn't like this earlier today, but I'm just gonna continue to move forward. This is the breakdown, the big orange pie that looks like it's missing its number is actually the sewer number, which ends up being, I believe, around, I thought it was like 30 something. I'll have to go back and look at my notes and get you that back. But you can see the, the biggest amount of expenses that we have within MSD are with Public Works within the Water and Sewer Department, which really do function on their own. We have various funds within MSD that range from general fund, water and sewer, and sanitation. We have the road millage. So there's lots of funding mechanisms that go into our overall budget. And depending on how, what, what kind of projects we're doing, will determine where those dollars are coming out of. And this budget is actually up from 2021 by about almost $3 million. And the reason for that is we saw our water usage go up significantly in 2020 to the tune of almost $600,000. And then we actually did, we made a commitment to start investing more dollars into, into our water main replacements and extensions. So that's went from 1.25 million to 2 and a half million dollars. And we did that in 2021 as well, and it worked well. I worked with Brad and the engineering department in regards to if we could take on even more capacity because our water fund can support more capital improvements than, than what we put in there. But there is also the limitation, just the human limitation, that we, we not sure we can take on more right now. So we want to function at that level for a couple more years and make sure that we're being able to complete the projects that, that we have in the books and, and then reassess that. And I think when you, when you look at that, and the reason for the big jump is, I've worked for some communities that are completely built out. And the last thing you want to do is get behind in infrastructure improvements. And as soon as you start to see water main breaks and you start to see more usage on your system and as it gets older, you want to, if, if possible, to increase your amount of capital infrastructure improvements. So that's what we're trying to accomplish here and, and continue with those improvements. We also saw an increase in sewage. Obviously, that makes sense. If your water's going up, your sewage is gonna go up as well. So that budget increased by about $500,000. With all of this being said, and thank you, Patrick, our sewer dollars are just about $16 million. So, and then stormwater was 747,000. So thank you, Patrick, for texting me that while I was talking. The, so looking at all of this, and out of $57 million, we did decrease our general fund expenses by 40,000, which is usually what is talked about the most, is usually the bigger concern. So we did, we did decrease our, our expenditures out of general fund by about $40,000 across all the different divisions. And I'll stay on this slide while I talk about the revenues. And I don't have the exact revenue dollar amounts because we do try and we, we budget, you know, dollar for dollar expense for revenue. But I kind of alluded that the MSD budget is made up of the different funds, which is general fund, water and sewer, sanitation, and the road millage. And with the road millage, water and sewer funds, and the sanitation fund, they can operate with a fund balance at the end of each year. So we try and set rates, which will be coming back before you in a couple of weeks in regards to the water and sewer rates, with what is our target fund balance in that, and set the rates accordingly. So, so that fund is always changing. Same thing with sanitation. And I'll touch more on sanitation later on in the slide because we could see some, some bigger recommendations for that fund moving into 2022. And then in regards to building, any revenue, we, we can't have, you, you have to spend all of your building dollar revenue on building dollar, or on building expenses. And there is law that states that, that kind of guide that with what our fees are. And so with the building department permit fees, that's highly regulated and we can't actually make revenue off of the building department. So I'm gonna go through each of the different divisions and touch briefly on what some of the highlights and some of the forecasts are for the individual divisions. The building department, building and development activity is projected to stay flat from 2021, which I should have put in there from 1 in 2020. Those record-breaking years as far as permits come in. So in what we have, and I kind of, well, I put building and planning on the same page because what we have in the pipeline coming through the planning department and future builds, the pipeline is strong. So I don't foresee any big changes within those two departments over the, in 2022. And the, let me see, in the planning department, again, we've got the, the pipeline that's pretty strong. One of the projects we'll be undertaking in 2022 is the Township's master plan. And that will also be our first full year with our planning services contract up and running, which will be coming before you next Tuesday for approval. That, I believe, we discussed it last week. It'll come before you for a formal approval next Tuesday. Highlights and forecasts for engineering, obviously, the sidewalk repair and gap program will continue. In fact, we're looking at dollars being allocated towards that as we continue to talk about the gap program. And I know through conversations with the supervisor and the clerk that we're gonna be looking at a much more robust gap program. And engineering, it will be, be, be running that. We've talked about it internally. So that, you may see that number change come November of this year when we bring you the formal or any sort of amendments to what's being discussed tonight. I mean, once we put together a course of action as to how to implement that. And obviously, the biggest thing in engineering is the roads. Well, I shouldn't say that because the sidewalk repair program is pretty big. And I don't, I don't want to downplay busy that is and how it actually dedicates the time to that. But the road, roads are obviously a really big topic within the township right now. And we, in regards to the local road projects, we will be determining those projects when the homeowners associations submit their, their projects. We're gonna be doing a call for projects here in a couple of months and have those applications due later this summer. In regards to the major road project considerations, we're looking at Lily Road from Michigan to Palmer, Sheldon Road to Mich, from Michigan Avenue to Yoast, and Lots Road from Michigan Avenue to Palmer. And then there's a larger discussion that we may be looking at is, which is Canton Center from Ford Road to Warren. We will continue with the preventative maintenance, which is the catch basin repairs and improvements that have been talked about since the millage was passed and approved. And why I don't have any finality to this is because there's a couple of things that go into it. One, we'll have our next road advisory committee meeting where we'll talk about this strategy for 2022. And then also, a lot of this is dependent on the bids. And when we go out to bid and we look at what the fund, how much is actually in the road funds within the different silos that we have or depart, sub-departments we have within that department, we will look and see that is, and the budget is a big piece of that. So, and then I, and I have to give this caveat that those, what's at the bottom because as soon as people hear this, it gets put into the paper on the new, or on the website. But these projects are tentative and it's not like this is an official announcement because we have to wait to go through this process and then review the bids and compare that to the allotted millage, the millage dollars that are in the fund. But this is just to kind of give you an overview of where we're looking. And obviously, there's formal approval that will come back before the board. Public Works is another very big, busy division within MSD. We're gonna continue on with our water main replacement and expansion in 2022. What we're looking at, some of this is derived by us doing, watching where there are higher risk areas. So if there are five water main breaks within a mile, we look at that and say, okay, we need some attention here. And, and we'll look at how we can get that worked into this, these projects in the future. So, and then there's other projects that are on here that were actually part of the water system master plan, which was done a few years ago, I believe in 2018. So we're looking at Beck Road, south of Michigan Avenue for a water main extension, Joy Road, water main extension. And Glengarry will continue to replace me, water main in Glengarry in different phases. I had mentioned a few minutes ago about sanitation. And this, we, we've had some revelations is just even within the last week that could affect this fund that will be coming back before the board for probably more dollars allocated within this fund. But we will see a 3% contractual increase. And that's just a contractual increase that we have with GFL, with our hauler. And we will be adjusting the solid waste collection fee every year we work with. We look at the fund balance and there was a study done a few years ago that has kind of laid out suggested fees for the next years. And I think we've got two more years on that. And Diane and I talk about that every year and along with finance to say, okay, what's the fee gonna be this year? I do believe it's, it's set to increase next year, but only by a few dollars for an entire year. So maybe, right now, it's $155 for the residents per year for sanitation. We could see that somewhere 59 to the 160s, depending on how we, how we approach this fund and when we see the final expenses. One of the things that we're looking at is, you'll see the picture and you're probably wondering, I have a pile of dirt on this slide. And that's actually all of our compost from last year that was taken to Ipsy Township. There was a contract right between the two townships and that is where our hauler took all of our compost. We were notified just last week officially by the Ipsy Township that they have not been in compliance with the state and they actually took in too much compost, so they can no longer take our. And they actually took in too much compost, so they can no longer take our compost. Our contract was set to renew this year anyway, and we had every intention of doing that because the fee that they charged was, is, is the least in the, in, in the region. In the area. So we're working with GFL to go ahead and dispose of that elsewhere. But it, because of the location of where they have to take it, it's going to be further than going to Ipsy Township. And we will be paying more. We're still negotiating that with GFL to try and get the best rate possible. But one of the things that Brad and I talked about and even in the supervisor when we were doing a tour is creating our own compost site behind the DPW yard. We're right now looking at how much total property, total acreage we own out there. And then actually, we may be able to take on that, that compost ourselves and save a significant hundreds of thousands of dollars per year within that fund. But that's not going to happen for 2021 and probably not for 2022. Because it takes, again, it's regulated by the state. We have to work with them on creating the correct site. Make sure that we're in compliance. We probably would need some equipment to move earth and maybe some additional staff. The good thing about this is it could be cost new, it could be a cost savings for us once we're up and running. And then we have other communities that have actually expressed interest in actually disposing their compost on our site if it was big enough. So it could actually turn into a revenue generator for us in the end, could possibly reduce the sanitation rates back down to where they were today. But again, this is all in the discovery phase, but I thought it was worth it to put it into this presentation. So that you're aware of what's happening with the sanitation fund. And the other big thing that we're doing, and I'm sure there'll be more questions on that. And I'll answer, and Brad and I can answer those questions as we move forward. But the other thing we are doing and we're going to be implementing at the DPW yard is a hazardous waste disposal drop off site. For residents that can drop off hazardous, liquid hazardous waste, and that will be up and running later this spring. The last big piece that DP, or sorry, that MSD, that it falls under MSD is our fleet, which is actually a division. Underneath DPW as well. And 75% of our fleet within DPW has been replaced within the last 10 years. And our strategy for our current fleet has always been to proper, you know, proper preventative maintenance and warranty work. And then I added this for this year because I think our strategy, and again, I guess I'll find out more on Friday after we talk through some of the, the strategic goals of the, of the board. But one of the future strategies is obviously alternative fuel where possible. So I've been working with Clark, who's our fleet manager, and Brad, and also the other directors. So in the 2022 budget, we are proposing one electric vehicle purchase, which would be an administrative vehicle for the police department. And five additional hybrid patrol vehicles. And if it was the desire not to go hybrid, that could turn into six fuel vehicles that were, that have the hybrid technology. We have a dump truck within DPW. And then fire will be looking to purchase an ambulance and an SUV as well. So that's, those are the purchases we're looking at for fleet. I know fire, I'm sure Chris may talk about this later about his, his vehicles. I know there's been some movement between what was going to be purchased in 2022 versus 2023 and moving some things up. But I'll let him talk about that. So that, that's the fleet. And so this is Canton Municipal Services in 2020 and 2021. And we continue to, to provide quality service to the community. And we cannot wait to get back to this, which was pre-COVID, no mask. See some smiling faces, some, some closer. You can see people are standing closer, which kind of looks a little odd right now. But yeah, we can't get way, way to get back to support, maintain the safety and quality for our residents, quality of life for our residents and businesses. And with that, I will stop sharing my screen and if there's any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Are there any questions? No, some people have their screens off, just to let you guys know, and you're on mute. Stephen.
Thanks. Just a quick question, the, the sanitation contract, when is that up for renewal?
May 24. Yes.
Oh, great. Okay. So we still have a while.
Yes.
That was it. Thanks for the presentation. It's great.
Summer, I think you had your hand up.
Yeah, I don't really have a question, but I just wanted to say that I love the composting idea.
Thank you. Tanya?
Yeah, I just wanted to know based on, so you just said the water budget went up. Is there, like, are there any other significant increases? What is, what is the increase from last year? Like, I, I went through the other funds, but based on what, that's different from what the budget is for the MSD, right? So how much did it, did, has it gone up since last? Are you estimating it to go up since last year, since 2021?
No, you're talking overall?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, it, the, what it went up was about the $3 million overall between all of the funds. And I, and I combined all of the funds into one because that's what makes up the MSD fund. And that $3 million was made up mostly because of the, mostly out of the water. So in general, fund was actually reduced.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Michael.
I want to say it looks like you've got a sneak peek into the board goal session. Because you've already kind of preemptively started some of the things that we've got on our list of things that we would be interested in seeing. So.
MSD is just that good, Michael.
How beautiful. It's like a symbiotic, no, I mean, you're like a super, super department with your four divisions. You guys do great, great work and great, you know, appreciate you and everything that you've got going on. I, I have no, actually, I do have a question. So like, let's say 2023 or so, we come up with a composting. Is that where like residents could take that compost and like garden with it? Or is that solely for municipal contracts and to house it for ourselves?
No, the way we could, we would structure it is that this is something we could offer to the residents. They could come in and obtain any sort of mulch that we may be able to, to create with, with chip, through chipping. I mean, as obviously the composting process works through its way, creates that rich soil. So yes, residents will be able to come in and get that as well. And then actually, we could use it within our own facilities. So that's absolutely something we could give, that will be able to be given back to the community. But just if we do implement this, which I do think that that's, I'm obviously getting a lot of feedback on that. That will take a few years because obviously that composting process doesn't work. It doesn't happen overnight. So, so we would probably, we would probably be looking at 2023, 2024 until we could actually see where it would be available to the public.
It is, I don't know, Jade, you got what he had talked about earlier. So we have been going to Ipsy, they've been picking up our composting, we've been taking it there. And it, residents didn't know this, but because of that, we were able to get that composting. But I, many did not know that because our compost is breaking down in Ipsilanti right now. So I'm assuming Jade, between the years when we get it up and running, we could go to Ipsilanti, you're going to find that out, correct? Make sure.
Yeah, well, yes, yep, we talked about that today, so I'm going to go ahead and look into that.
One thing to think about is you, if that program gets implemented is some, somehow finding a way for the school district to participate because I could imagine they create a lot of compostable waste.
Sure.
Could be an educational thing as well.
Sure.
That's true.
I know the, some township, I don't remember which, but they got an award from the MTA for they had, they had worked with their school, district to create a food waste. They actually created, they did something like energy creation out of the food waste. It wasn't composting, it was a whole, they built a facility that, I guess, created methane out of the, basically your food waste. It was really fascinating. Not suggesting we do that. It, it got me thinking about the schools participating, so.
Sure.
Yeah, you're right. And Kate?
So not really a question because Michael asked my question. But I too love the composting idea, especially if our residents will be able to benefit from it. And also hoping that we can, if we ever do do this, that perhaps the community gardens could also benefit.
Definitely. And I know, just to let you know, so on top of the, one of the landfills, not the one here in Canton, the one a little bit further to the east. At the top of that site, waste management is us having like a little school for recycling. And you, so you can take a trip to the top and then you sit in the classroom and they show you, you know, how, what's happening out in the yards. That would be something.
Even I'm doing a Zoom council meeting at the same.
You know, that would be.
It's only.
Oops, somebody's talking there. Okay. Any other questions?
Oh, one more. Yep, thanks. So this could be for Director Trumbull also. So just so, just remind me, the water main projects that you talked about, Director Smith, those come out of the water fund? Is that right? Okay. And so we'll see those again when we talk about the water fund in a couple of weeks, months or weeks? Is that right, Director Trumbull?
Well, so we have a study session on the water and sewer rates for the upcoming years, proposed rates in two weeks. So we will, oh, yeah, we'll, we'll talk about what projects we need to fund at that, at that point in time. But obviously, Director Smith will bring, before any projects are actually approved, those will come back before the board for, for, for an approval.
So we, we kind of have to work them into the water rates too. So we'll do that first and discuss them and then they'll come forward for approval after all that.
Correct.
Yes.
I've only done this nine times now, so. Perfect, thank you.
It's, it's a big puzzle.
All right. Thank you. Okay, who's your next guest, Wendy?
I think Director Stockline is up next with the fire. Looks like the police and fire all together in their EOC room. So it'll go from director, Stockline right to Director Ba after that.
Hello, everyone. Can you guys hear me okay? All right, well, good evening. Just wanted to introduce who's here with us tonight. We've got Barb Crusoe, our executive assistant. She's the one that put all this PowerPoint together. It really is the brains behind the ship here. Jamie Strassner, our deputy chief, and then Will Hayes, emergency manager. So I know you guys have heard about Will Hayes a lot in the past few months and we can finally put a mask to the face here. At any rate, good evening and we'll, we'll get started on the fire department budget for 22. And so the fire department does their budgeting. Every single time we come to a budget, I should say a budget item, it always comes. Could you click that for Barbara, can you? But every, every year that the fire department goes to budget, what happens is that the budget process is those items that want to, somebody wants to put in for, that goes to the deputy chief and submitted to him. The deputy chief will then review that budget and then passes it on to myself. Once I review it and approve it, then it goes over to Wendy for Director Trumbull for a room review. And the supervisors review as well. And then eventually ends up for you here for the board to review. So with that being said, every single budget item that is purchased has several checkpoints that we review that with. And so moving through that process, our staffing, just to give you a little bit of background on the staffing. We currently employ 69 firefighter paramedics, one fire marshal and two inspectors. I know we've had this conversation in the past about our staffing. So this kind of breaks it down for you so that you can see where, where our staffing lies. Will, the emergency manager, he is not really coming out of our budget. He is in his own budget. It comes out of the MPG, which we'll talk about in a little bit. They pay for half of his budget and then the other half comes out of general. And then of course, Barb for our executive assistant, we pay a portion of her and then the police department pays the other portion. With that, we pay for our dispatch, 18 PSSOs. We, nine budget out of the fire and then point three was with two dispatch supervisors that we have down there to supervise that. And then first, I have a secretary and a clerk. And then we also pay for some of the records bureau, one, one person in records bureau, one ordinance officer. So that's kind of gives you a breakdown of where our funds are spent on personnel and benefits on the fire department side. So this next slide, for those of you that haven't seen it before, we put this together just to kind of give you a comparison of where we're at. Compared to other communities in the area. Unfortunately, we couldn't get the information back from Quiten Township this year for the 21 analysis. But you can see that we operated about $192 per capita on our residents. Which is one of the lowest in any of these areas here. We know that we're still showing the 2010 census. And that 2010 census, we know is probably about 10,000 low. And we know that some of those other communities have dropped in population, but we've still continued to rise. So and then LaVoyne, I think will be the perfect example of that. So you can kind of see what our total sworn are and how many firefighters we have per thousand residents. One of the bigger things in there is how many fire stations, we are still operating with three fire stations compared to the majority of the organizations that have five. And for those of you that haven't seen this slide before, we include Fishers, Indiana. Because as we've stated before, we're one of four departments that are accredited in the state of Michigan. Fishers, Indiana is one of those departments that is an accredited department, very similar in size to us. And you can kind of see where they, where they stand with their manpower and also their census and fire stations. So just an organized chart there, just to kind of give you a broad spectrum of where we're operating at. And I think that we do a lot with, with what we're provided, provided excellent service for that. Next one, this slide here just kind of talks about where we get our funding. You know that we've been pretty successful on the grants that we've gone out for. I know that we've received well over a million dollars in grants in the past couple of years here with our safer funding. With our grants for the COVID AFG. So we continue to apply for those grants, but these are just some of them. U.S.C. is one that goes through our county here. And Will is actually sits on that as well, tries to pull in funds for us. Our last funding from them was for radios. So everywhere we can find a grant and apply for it, we're applying for it. Most recently, we applied for the physicals for the firefighters through AFG. And I'll talk about that a little bit more in the, in the budget later. MMRMA, our insurance provider, we're always applying for those rapid cap grants and accreditation. We can find for accreditation to get funded for Staffing and Command School through that. Anything that we can find, you know, that we've worked to put in for those. And like I said, we've been pretty successful on that, so we'll continue to do that for the community to save every penny we can for them. So just on this slide here, I'm going to actually let Jamie talk to you about it. But we wanted to make sure that we, we talk a little bit about some future considerations that we'll talk about later in the slideshow here. But I'll let, turn this over to Jamie here.
All right, thank you. Good evening, everyone. The first slide that we're looking at here is a fire station response time map. You might have seen this before in our strategic plan. But what this is showing is basically drive times surrounding each one of the current stations that we have. And one of the key points to this slide is the southeast corner of the township, which has, obviously in the red section, there is over 10 minutes of drive time. Drive time plays a big factor in our response time. We have four different components. The first one is the time it takes dispatch to pick up the phone. Then the reaction time, which is the time it takes the firefighters to respond to that tone that goes off from dispatch. Then they get in the truck and they begin driving. That's what this slide is displaying. So the problem lies with this slide, as I stated, the southeast corner of the township there has well over 10 minutes for us to drive there. There's a lot of other factors that are involved in this, but this is just a cursory overview of a potential response time issue that we have. And we see this basically in the accreditation world as a risk that we need to resolve. And a lot of the things that I'm going to discuss with my four slides for you guys tonight really help us become really data driven and really that drives our decision-making process when we're doing our budgeting processes and bringing forward the ideas and things to you and the board. But that's it for this slide. Okay, this next one is our annual run volume and this one was definitely pandemic. Definitely had a pandemic issue with it. We were constantly rising in run volume over the last five years. And then when two thousand twenty came upon us in the COVID nineteen pandemic, we noted that our run volume started to decrease throughout the year. And matter of fact, our EMS runs ended lower than they did in two thousand and eighteen. We look at these numbers and, you know, we try and analyze them and figure out exactly what's going on. Is this trending? Is this outlier? And with COVID, it's hard to say right now. Currently this year, our run volume is kind of tracking on the same path as, as two thousand and twenty. But we also know that there's a lot of fear out there that people just don't want to go to the ER right now. They're just not, we're just not seeing the transports that we were seeing in two thousand and twenty. What has remained steady though is the fire run volume, which is noted at the bottom of the slide there in green. That has been relatively even over the last five years. All right, this one here is our emergent response time. And this one is tied to a lot of initiatives. Again, the accreditation model allows us to really be outcome based, right? We really want to figure out if what we're doing is working or not working. So this slide here talks about an average response time and you can see an EMS response and a fire response. And as you note there, that in two thousand nineteen to two thousand and twenty, we're starting to see a slight increase in those emergent response times. One reason for these increases that we've noted is the COVID response that we're currently doing, just allowing the personnel to have the time to don the correct PPE for each run has definitely increased our emergent response time. Also, there's been a few other initiatives that we started over the last couple of years, but specifically even in two thousand and twenty. We, we have priority dispatch, which is a new initiative and dispatch where they're giving pre-arrival instructions to EMS calls. And also we have a new station alerting system. It's called BRICS. It's a soft start tone. Maybe you guys will get the chance maybe to see it at Station Two in a couple of weeks when we go tour that facility. But it has an automated voice that, that pushes the dispatch information. All these things are aimed at reducing our reaction times. And although we haven't realized it fully yet in two thousand and twenty, we're definitely expecting two thousand and twenty-one to start to see our average times come down. Okay. And then finally, the last slide that I have for you is our mutual aid slide. And this really speaks to, especially when we're talking about budgeting, the resiliency of the agency, right? How, how, how are we when the run volume is so excessive that we don't have any more resources to send and we have to rely on mutual aid? As you can see through this slide here, it's kind of had a weird track. And in two thousand and seventeen, we saw a sharp decrease in mutual aid. And then we were right back in eighteen and nineteen with, I would consider relatively high amount of mutual aid. In two thousand and twenty, though, we had a sharp decrease. Some of that is attributed to COVID nineteen pandemic. But another aspect that we really feel like is a good outcome is the additional personnel that we've added in two thousand and twenty. We raised, we raised minimum personnel to seventeen and that allowed us to staff a fourth squad twenty-four seven. And that allowed us to be more resilient and not have crews out taking care of other, other incidents and having ambulances available to treat Canton residents, which is really one of our more driving points.
So just getting back to the reason that we, we throw those slides in there is just so that you, like, like the deputy chief said, so you understand where our decisions are coming from. We're looking at this data and it's kind of guiding us on where we're asking for the budget. So in here, you can see that twenty-two, we haven't asked for many increases. Obviously no decreases in there, but many increases over the entire budget, these few items here. One of those factors like the deputy was talking about was staffing those, those ambulances. So with the addition of Station Two opening, our plan moving forward is to one more squad in service. So we will have five squads in service in the township at all times. That means that we are going to increase our minimum manning once again. So once that minimum manning goes up to nineteen, we know that we're going to see a more effect on the overtime budget. And that's where you will see that, that expense going up. But that, that will help us, like I said, that guides us to know that we're going to spend that extra money on overtime and we're going to provide a better service for the community. So these operating expenses, these are normal expenses for our ALS supplies, metal equipment. As we see these, these runs, whether it's COVID or whatever it may be, the cost of medical equipment is going up. So minimal expenses on those uniforms. We know that like the deputy said, we've added some firefighters this past year. So we know, we know we're going to need a little bit more uniform money in there. And then that employee medical exams, that's what I spoke about earlier with the AFG. So we've never implemented a physical for the firefighters in the history of the fire department. We're looking to move in that direction. We know that implementing something like this where we can do these preliminary physicals for the firefighters, then it's going to catch diseases, catch, you know, issues with the firefighters prior to a big issue coming. And our hope is, and our, and our plan is, is we're spending a little bit of money on this upfront. We can collect these, we can get these firefighters into these physicals. We can find these issues prior to becoming a large workers comp issue, right? Where the firefighters would be out for a heart attack and out for a long time. If we can catch these kinds of things, we know that the studies show that they decrease our workers comp, decrease our healthcare costs, all these things. But hopefully we'll get the AFG grant with that and that'll offset that price as well. And we can take that out of the budget when it's actually approved. We are planning on having those starting this year. We'll see what happens when it comes back from that, from that grant writer. I'm sorry, from the AFG grants. And finally, tell the staff software. So that's the program that keep up with. So our capital outlay for twenty-two, nothing major in here until you get down to the bottom. All the other stuff is pretty much a normal maintenance items. The capital outlay for vehicles, as Jayden alluded to, or Director Smith had alluded to, we have these one ambulance, I'm sorry, two ambulances and one fire engine budgeted for the twenty-two year. We've got a lot of conversation back and forth, or I've had a lot of conversation back and forth with the manufacturers and also with Director Trumbull about these vehicles. We know that they're budgeted out. They've got an eighteen month build time. So most likely you're going to see these, these twenty-two capital items pulled forward to twenty-one just because we know that we actually won't receive them until twenty-two, once we get them ordered. And we're going to end up having to look back at our entire plan here and possibly moving vehicles forward a year on all these, because we know that, you know, anywhere from fifteen to eighteen months span is an ambulance or an engine that build time is going to have to be pulled forward for us. That, we'll talk a little bit about the budget and our breakdown. So you can see here, this one, majority of our, our budget goes towards the salaries and pension benefits, seventy-eight percent. So not leaving very much for the imagination there. I mean, we got the capital outlay that we spoke about and the indirect costs are really a lot of things that, you know, we're doing around the fire station there. Or the, the, I'm sorry, the indirect cost or what goes out to the rest of the township facilities there. And then we've got our supplies and our services. So pretty clear to see where, where the majority of our funding is going on the budget. So then our final slide for the fire department, you know, we've talked a lot about how, how we're looking at the future and how that dictates our budgeting. I want Jamie to touch on the accreditation again.
That's right. Thank you. So the annual compliance that's on the slide there, like a lot of, of the different departments in the township, they're already accredited. They most likely have to do some sort of annual compliance. And since we just got accreditation last March, every February now, we'll have to submit our annual compliance documents. And a lot of this stuff we were already kind of doing, but not as formally as the accreditation process has, has allowed us or made us start doing. So every program, there is a appraisal that is done. That means community risk reduction, fire prevention, fire suppression, EMS. They all are stringently looked at, the, the response times, new initiatives, budgetary changes, what needs to happen to that program to make it better. Because as you all know, the accreditation process is a, is a process of continuous improvement. And what's really great about that is we can get everyone involved in the department to help us create these programs and these appraisals. But ideally, the best version of getting this annual compliance done and maintaining this accreditation is via an accreditation manager, an official person that has the responsibilities to perform a lot of these accreditation tasks. It's hard for just the two of us upstairs currently to, to get a lot of these things done, although we're able to do it somehow, some way. But it is getting more and more a challenge each year to, to, to satisfy the accreditation requirements. As we get bigger and we do continue to get bigger, the accreditation demands are definitely ongoing.
So with that saying, also with the accreditation, as they make those recommendations up, that's why we have this up here, because there are going to be things that are going to come up in the future that we're going to have to obviously make budget adjustments for in order to, to meet those requirements that they place upon us. And not that we have to meet those requirements, those are suggestions, right? To continue that, that compliance with accreditation. But ultimately it's going to be your decision, you know, where the accreditation says, hey, this is really, you know, the best practice. And if you want to follow best practice to continue to be accredited, these are the steps that you need to take. So going back to the fire station here, as you can see kind of our last line item here, you know, it was kind of, we built a little bit up to it in the past year. You know what our, our response times, you know, that, you know, we're, when we compare ourselves to other communities that we're far behind that. So it's something that you will definitely see. We're going to bring it to the study session on April sixth, when I want to spend too much time on, on budget stuff. But just know that those are, those are future considerations that we really need to look at. When we talk about a fire station, it's not just a fire station, right? You've got X amount of dollars for land, you've got X amount of dollars for the building, you've got X amount of dollars for apparatus, and then you get the expensive part. You have to bring personnel and the staff in as well. So just something for you to consider as we move forward. And if you have any questions on the fire stuff, I will take that right after we talk a little bit about emergency management. Just because I can't see your faces right now, just looking at our slides. So once we're done with this, we'll switch back over there and I'll answer your questions for you. So emergency management, obviously Will Hayes probably didn't know his name before last year, twenty twenty. But he's been amazing here, a very big help to us. He's really one man department. So he, he operates underneath the police and fire. So he reports directly to Director Ba, myself. And with that being said, like, like he, he does everything, right? So he doesn't have assistants, he doesn't have secretaries. He, he pretty much takes care of that all on his own. Budgeted under the general fund and he currently collects fifty percent of his salary through the EMPG, which is a state emergency management program. Through this COVID nineteen response, he played key roles, doing the research, monitoring, coordinating, notifying our, our leadership team throughout this pandemic and continues to do that. He assisted us getting PPE for the, for the firefighters, PPE for the police officers, PPE for the rest of the township, set up hotlines to assist the elderly homebound seniors. He was also very on the front lines of setting up with schools and religious institutions, making sure that they are understanding the protocols for PPE. Really, really has his hands in everything in the township as far as COVID goes. And that's not where it ends. He obviously brought in the testing facility out back. He's also brought in vaccinations. As you know, I mean, many of you said on the calls with the county, he's on all those calls, making the calls at night. He's coming in early, opening up the testing center, staying late, finishing up the next day, trying to, trying to figure out how we're going to get these vaccinations for all the seniors. Really, really instrumental in public safety and really instrumental in the rest of the township, making sure that our citizens are taken care of. But that's not where that job ends also, that job also, you know, like we have any kind of natural disaster. He's doing all that pre-planning. Everything would not have gone so smooth in the township through this COVID pandemic had he not had that pre-planning in place and not had those plans with the county setup, hazard mitigation plans, all those things. Will is the one that writes those. We review them and then we bring them over to you for the approval. So then I can't give enough credit tonight for all the things that he's done over, over the past year here. So, and there's his budget. So as you can see, we don't have the increases or decreases. The budget's pretty minimal. And, you know, when he comes to ask for stuff, the majority of the time, he doesn't have a budget. So we have to find other ways or other means of doing it, whether that's paid through for the fire department or we bring it to the supervisor for approval. That's where we usually end up getting that, not much capital at all in his, in his budget. So. And with that being said, if you have any questions for Deputy Chief, myself or Will, feel free to ask us.
Diane.
These have all been great presentations. I just want to make a quick comment about Will Hayes. You know, Canton Township is very fortunate to have an emergency manager coordinator like Will, especially during the COVID times when we went into shutdown. We had daily meetings, the leadership and Will, and he really, I mean, I can't say enough of how thankful I am and we are to have, have you on board with us. It's really helped because a lot of communities don't have a will. And so we're very fortunate to have you. Thanks.
Yeah, that's very true. I was speaking to the mayor of Northville yesterday and he was asking me about some things that we'd already taken care of in terms of vaccinating seniors in our towers and assisted living back in January and December. And it's like Diane said, other communities don't have emergency managers that stay on top of things and look out for our residents like he has. Any questions on the presentation? Steven?
I hope you're on mute. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Exciting to, looking forward to talking about potential Station Four in a few weeks. So. The only question I had was on the overtime. It looked like there was an increase in overtime by a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And I was wondering what base of overtime that was on? How much overtime are we planning for this year versus two thousand and twenty-two?
Well, to be honest with you, finance figures, the overtime, they look at our salaries, they look at our, our past trends. So we're kind of given that, that number. We tell them what we're going to be doing and she knows that we're raising our minimum manpower, our minimum manning. And when that happens, you know, we're, we're kind of, we were a little bit behind on the eight ball here for last year. We, we spent a little bit more than what we expected. So that's where you'll see that increase. And when she knows that we're going to be raising that, that manpower up or manning up, we know that we're going to end up spending that, that money. And that, you know, right now we have a buffer. So, you know, if somebody calls in sick, we're able to not call in overtime to fill that, that spot because we're still at that seventeen person minimum. When we go to nineteen and we only have twenty-three on shift, there is no more buffer. So we know we're going to see that overtime every single day. You know, if, if one person calls in sick or two people call sick, then all of a sudden that's creating twenty-four hours of overtime, you know, and at their overtime rate, you know, that could be upwards of seven hundred dollars a day, eight hundred dollars a day.
Yeah, I mean, I understand the flexibility that overtime gives you, which is necessary. I just wonder, and I don't need to know it right now, but the breaking point of where all of a sudden it makes sense to increase your staffing, because overtime is becoming so great. So just the number a hundred and forty-five thousand dollar increase gives me an idea of how much increase you're going to do, which, you know, is one to two people worth of overtime, a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. But I just wasn't. But I just wasn't sure, is that on a base of a million dollars of overtime that you, we're going to do this year? Or is it just an increase like uh, on a base of a hundred thousand and we're just going to go up? Because it's not quite enough to justify hiring people.
So in twenty-two, we had four hundred and fifty thousand budgeted compared to twenty-one, which was three hundred and fifteen thousand budgeted.
Okay.
So, and, and like you said, I mean, that's probably a great talking point when we have our study session. Um, because when we look at four hundred and fifty thousand, we know that that's, um, you know, that's considerable amount of money. But you also have to remember that, um, other things are in there, so that's not just straight work overtime. Um, and Wendy can speak to it just as, just as well, Director Trumble. Um, you know, that also includes holiday overtime, so if somebody's working holiday, that's all considered in there as well. Um, which kind of bounces that, that number up considerably when we're talking about holiday overtime and those kinds of things. Okay, thanks.
Tanya?
Yeah, so I have a question on, you know, the setting of this vaccination and testing site. And do this come out of your budget? Um, has this, have you put uh, put that into consideration for the twenty twenty-two budget? Like, you know, if, when you adopted the twenty twenty-one budget?
Um, could you repeat that for me? I have a hard time hearing you.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, so uh, for, you know, the vaccination clinic, the vaccination and the testing uh, clinics that you have set up for, um, and for this um, year, does that, is that something that comes out of uh, the the public safety budget? Or is like, have you taken that into consideration when you, um, the fire and um, medical department budget?
So fortunately, we were able to uh, recover uh, much of the money from the testing site from Wayne County. Um, you, you had voted on that uh, a few weeks back. Um, so we were able to recover some of that money from uh, Wayne County or the majority of that money. I think it was twenty-two thousand, correct? Twenty, twenty-four thousand, twenty-four thousand dollars from Wayne County. Um, some of the other things like um, signs and, and small uh, lantern lights and stuff like that. Um, it was a, a small amount of money, like I think one thousand, two thousand dollars. So that was kind of came out of the fire budget and then we'll, or, or the general budget that we will be uh, putting in for that from the CARES Act as well to get reimbursed on that, that fund. So fortunately, everything's been covered so far to this point and we'll continue to uh, ask for that funding from the government as well.
Okay, but have you put that into your budget for this year? Um, some sort of expense for that because there, I'm assuming there will be more vaccination clinics and more testing happening. And you're, are you expecting everything to, you know, you will be able to recover it? Have you, were you able to put that in your budget for this year, the twenty twenty-one adopted budget?
So we have not added anything to the budget. Um, we are expecting to get reimbursement on, on the majority of those items, but we don't really see um, much of a cost coming in. I, I think the bigger cost will be, um, maybe like, we'll be around the meeting prior to this, uh, registration software, those sort of things, uh, that's going to probably end up coming through I T, um, more, more than uh, emergency management or fire department.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, anyone else? All right, thank you for the presentation, thank you. Who do you have next, Wendy?
Um, Director Ba and the police are up next.
All right, I'm assuming everyone can hear me and uh, you can see our photograph, the picture of you, you know? Um, first of all, you know, it's two thousand twenty-two proposed budget, I think Wendy's or guys along the way, that's in transition here. Um, introductions, again, we have our crew who, who's like, Chris at the brains on putting this project together for us. We have Craig Wiltshire to my left, these are police deputy chief and myself. Again, with the budget process, it starts off just like Chris said, we have the open budget request initiative here. And our staff puts together their ideas, puts them forth and we review them through our deputy chief and myself. And it goes over to the finance director and the township supervisor for review and it goes to you folks for um, approval from the board. The next slide shows our organizational chart. Yes, like, catch up here.
Sorry. Um, we aren't seeing the slides. Let me see.
We're going to get there right now, I hope.
Are you able to share? I'm wondering if I. There we go. Thank you.
We have our organizational chart and for context, there's a hundred and thirty-four employees. That's including ninety-six warrant police officers from my rank all the way to the police officer rank. We have thirty-eight or so other employees that are civilian employees, including eighteen records. First, or eighteen PSOS, which are dispatchers and two supervisors that we also supervise uh, for the I, the dispatch area. We have the Records Bureau, which has civilian clerks that also handles a large volume of FOIA for the township, which is our consistent police FOIA. And they work in concert with clerk's office to make sure, uh, FOIA is done properly. We have the deputy chief, who has six lieutenants that report to him. We have those lieutenants, um, split up, four in the patrol division, one that runs the investigation section and a special services lieutenant that only supervises the school resource officers, special selective enforcement or special enforcement officers at your traffic unit, the community relations officer and the training officer, the property room. He also oversees a good portion of our internal affairs and citizen complaint process. The investigation lieutenant has your traditional detectives, which you see in the detective bureau, it has a sergeant overseeing those uh, detectives. It has the ordinance enforcement underneath that. We've had those officers from the ordinance department for at least ten plus years now. They originally were situated on the other side of the township in the building department, but we took them on, I believe, ten or thirteen years ago. We now also have a crime analyst for approximately the last four or five years who uh, coordinates and does a lot of intel gathering for us so we can um, um, base some of our investigations on connectivity. We also have a surveillance team, it's called uh, Special Operations Group and it has a sergeant with five officers assigned to that. But when you move over to the next slide, we have um, ninety-six warrant. And you can see the eighty-one percent of our assigned sworn police officers are assigned to the uniformed division. That's a little bit more than the, the norm for the area and we do that, it's out of tradition and it's also out of reason and logic. Um, you have immediate service to our residents with the Uniformed Service Bureau. If you move back, Barbara, quick, to the organizational chart, you see where Barb says she's an executive assistant and does communications for us. Will is over there because he reports both to myself and the fire, uh, fire chief. I think that's it for the organizational chart, but if you move back to the comparative analysis, we have ninety-six sworn police officers. You, you'll see the population difference a little bit because we use the FBI crime recording because that's essentially the standard in which we're judged upon all the time based on our court, part one crime. And you'll see their budget for the year, uh, for twenty-one, that cost per capita is uh, below the norm for some of our best comparables there, when you look all the way to the left. We anticipate, I believe, the clerk's police is two, at least a hundred thousand population at the census. So we'll constantly look at how our numbers are to provide the best service for our citizens. And at the same time, and I'll talk to, you've probably heard it many times through different study sessions and different um, hearings that we've had or uh, conversations we had about the police department. You're seeing the culture change in society, in the region, in the state, in the United States. We're trying to create the best holistic service-based thinking police officer that we can. We do that through training and education. We always have, we've increased the legal education to the point where they're receiving and receiving legal education once a month based on Michigan law, township ordinances, the Sixth Circuit of the United States and the U S Supreme Court. So we're continually improving our officers' ability to make decisions and resolve problems in the field. There we go. Over the past ten years, we're talking about budget, so let's, let's consider some of the uh, alternative funding, uh, justice assistance grant funds over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the last ten years. You can see some of the things that we purchased with that body armor, that's the vastest officers. We're, the True Nerd Drug Identification System, the board last year helped us purchase that. That is a system where officers do not have to touch the drug immediately. You'll, you'll have the ability to identify the drug through this uh, special tool. This tool can identify it without exposing the officer to some of the harms that like a heroin cause or a fentanyl cause. And we've all seen that on the news. Um, some of our community programs are laptop computers, prescription drug box, video recording equipment. You can see on the other side there, the one point four million plus and forfeiture funds we've used over the last ten years. And we're required to um, use those at least on a three-year basis. So when they come in, we have to find ways to support the service low, level that we offer to the township through use of forfeiture funds. So we use those with uh, things that are quite expensive, handguns and tasers, canines. Um, you know, with the legislation with marijuana, we, we, he caused us to retire some of our canine dogs. We're able to purchase new canines, they're focused on tracking and hard drugs like heroin, fentanyl and cocaine. And we're able to pay for the, all the program expenses through this one forfeiture funds, um, with for our, for our canines. So it's some of the security access equipment or speed trailers and radar units, which people seem to really like when they have a problem in their neighborhood. We utilize a speed trailer to provide data, uh, that data now is being downloaded and we can provide traffic studies from um, the police department. Now, we don't have to wait for the county to go out through a special request. We can do our own traffic studies for speed. Um, also we buy some furniture with that to offset some of the, the costs. Average response times and cost per service. So like the cloud of COVID has caused for our nation, um, it's really changed the cost for service since March twelfth or thirteenth of twenty twenty, where we took a strategic uh, plan and how we, uh, police during a period like this and it hasn't necessarily changed too much. But meanwhile, the cost per service dropped to approximately twenty-four percent. What has improved is from the time you actually make the phone call to the actual time the police officer meets with you when our call for service, which is nineteen minutes. Now, I have to provide context, when there's an emergency situation, let's say the officer's taking a, a larceny report and someone needs immediate assistance, someone's breaking into the home, that response time is well within two or three minutes or even less in times. So, but if it's just a ru- routine mundane type complaint, uh, right now with cost per service being down twenty-four percent through this COVID period, right about nineteen percent or nineteen minutes, sorry. Um, provide some context of where we're at with the crime. You're seeing um, violent crime increase with um, to where it was in two thousand sixteen and you're seeing by a property crime decrease. Um, this, that's pretty standard throughout the region. Uh, we still have a very low rate of crime, suspecting we're going to be one of the safest communities around, especially if we hit that hundred thousand marker and we start getting compared to those communities with that type of population. And here's the comparison, you can see some of our comparables um, with our property or with our community crime comparison as it relates to property violent crimes. The average, we're well below the average, of course, we're in the arena of Troy, uh, less than Clint Township, less than LaFolia, less than Westland, Southland, Deer Warren, Waterford, Intermountain Hills, Shelby are put in there for uh, context. They, they also have uh, low crime rates. She'll probably throw out, uh, you may not be able to see it on the slide, but violent crime includes rape, murder, robbery and aggravated assault. This might be what violent crime is. Significant budget increases. So as we try to develop to be progressive, you know, a lot of the movements now in law enforcement is to be cognizant of what the community wants, what our citizens want. Not um, traditional law enforcement, be problem solvers, really redefine the definition of police officer. When you look at what we do, I think it won't be long before we actually put black and white in the job description, what we actually do. And as problem solvers, uh, having an embedded social worker come to our organization, which will be interviewed this week and picked very soon, once we have one of those uh, in our organization, we'll be able to have someone that can help provide and navigate people through the complex issues that they face when they're trying to receive substance abuse. Oh, buying housing, buying all the things that happen after the crisis mitigated by the police officer on day one. That embedded social worker on occasion can even be called at scene to help the officer make decisions. But primarily, I expect to see the social worker quite busy with all the mental health issues, substance abuse issues, the underlying causes for all the things that we see in our jobs and day-to-day operations. We had an increase in the budget with the West Proflex subscription, which is an education-based system to help us understand case law. It's um, really breaks down the law specific to our region. Uh, the covert track annual subscription, subscription that went up thirty-six hundred dollars. We're moving away from, um, you know, the immediate arrest, we, we build cases through surveillance. We use a corporate, corporate track annual subscription to um, cut down on costs and surveillance and mitigate the time spent on cases needlessly. The clear subscription helps us do re- research, that was an increase of five hundred dollars, the power D M S policy management system. So that's a forward-facing instrument we're going to be using very soon. Wendy's department, Director Trumbull's department's been very helpful putting together a website for us. Um, with that, we'll be able to put out our forward-facing information that includes policies. It's a big change in the culture and mindset of this organization where we've moved from never providing policies to providing most critical policies to our citizens to they understand how the third police department works. So that was an increase of twenty-three hundred dollars. We moved away from the door, which is a, a tracking software and how we account for training and into another system, so that was decreased twenty-seven hundred dollars in our payroll to staff software. It's a uniform type uh, increase with the township. Uh, some more increases on the police budget. Um, wireless access point for the body cameras, fifty-seven hundred dollar increase. Wire, wireless access at the gun range is a hundred dollars. That was for, um, so it helps with our training and have access, wireless access down there, which is down by the um, Lily and Michigan Avenue on the other side of the trash hill. Uh, the phone service decreased, that was just a service that we paid for. They came in and fixed the phones, we don't need that with their new phone system lodging with the prisoners. So there's been a change with the court and the Western Lane communities that use thirty-fifth district court. We do not use Out, Out County to place prisoners at the punitive stage. They do not go through Out County to, or um, through a vendor to go to another jail. They are actually lodged at Wayne County. So that was an increase of ten thousand dollars, decrease for prisoner items there. Uh, there's a decrease for academy tuition, personal training and S R O training increase for this year, or yeah, increase from twenty-two this year. Uh, capital outlet, here's just an over, overview of where we increased or what our budget is for these different items. Um, patrol, I think our laptop, five thousand dollars, laptop, seven thousand dollars. The command post is, uh, we replaced the TV in there, sixty-five inch monitors, desktop cell phones for command post of three thousand dollars. Um, conversion parts for the patrol vehicles. There was a design change with the Explorer, which caused uh, some of the parts did not fit from one model to another. So that's why you see that change in twenty-two. Um, you see for the vehicle, six vehicles in twenty-two, which may be five, because those will be hybrid and we're looking for the next administrative vehicle, one twenty-two to actually be a bit uh, the much occurred, so we'll see how that works and we'll talk to Jayden and his team to make sure that it's something that's feasible. Yeah, it's police budget breakdown, so you can see where our budget is. So you can see where our budget is primarily at. There's very not too much wiggle room, we're often eleven percent wages infringements really took a lot of hurt our budget. The indirect costs are six percent that's paying for some of the services we receive from the rest of the township. And developing items of interest. We have CIP building updates to really clean up what we've seen over the years that had went to the side for many different reasons, mostly because of budget constraints and concerns about our budget from two thousand and eight and on. We have a dispatcher renovation. The deputy chief will speak a little bit about nine-one-one funds and how they're used and how we can maybe use some of those funds to renovate our dispatch. Building security upgrades is a definite need. Over time, society's changed, there's concerns, this isn't something that's just come up over the last year. We've had conversations about this for twenty-five years where it's moved from a want to a need to secure the facility for now and our employees, but our assets, and that includes front desk security, includes record security, the way people can enter a building into a police area and from the behind with the fencing, yes, it could be. You see, command restructured, we're not talking about extra positions that this time is taking the positions that we do have, especially in a period of time where the workforce is, that's less than five or six years on the job, a period of time where law enforcement is going through an evolution of training, training, not only training, but the type of strategies that we will employ to make sure we're finding proper resources for our citizens and responding where citizens want, more importantly, by the law. And so the restructure brings more symmetry to the organizational chart. We'll bring that forth through the supervisor. Expansion of the PSA program, looking at that program as a way to be our feeder system to as our future police officers, as we see retirements in the near future, people will be retiring from our organization over the next five years. Restorative justice practices, again, as over to a number of our board members about over the last few years, but restorative justice comes in many different ways. We focus on juvenile diversion here recently. Some of the other measures that will come through solving problems at the street level. And a transparency guidance committee, I submitted a grant yesterday for a committee that will work with the CCI seat and open some transparency and provide some guidance back to me about the service level for our citizens, that the type of police service that they expect there. They've seen it not only through the complaints that they may be able to review and report back to me, which I'll report back to the supervisor or through that, we'll put them through a citizen police academy so they can see what we are training and what they make sure that it works for them as citizens. Because I think one of the biggest things, and we're seeing that is throughout the United States, people don't exactly understand what's going on with our police departments. Are we actually providing the service that's expected?
Craig, we talked about that. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to touch base on a few slides regarding our nine-one-one budget. So this is related to our nine-one-one dispatch center, which as both the police chief and fire chief discussed, that we have eighteen PSOS within that dispatch center currently. Our budget for eighteen, we currently have seventeen, so we run it from position. That posting is closed and we hopefully will have a position completely staffed in that in that center. We also have two dispatch supervisors who report to the special services lieutenant of the police department. When we talk about the dispatch center, there's been a lot of talk and it's been mentioned many times regarding the renovations that's coming up. So just to tell you a little bit about what dispatch center, how it's funded, we take local surcharges, collect and file bills for nine-one-one services. These funds are then distributed to the communities based on census population. These funds are normally restricted for items that are related to a call taker center, which includes furniture, phones, radios, and also training, and then also salaries. We're estimated to get about four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in revenue in two thousand and twenty-two. For the last couple of years, we've been preparing for what's been discussed as far as the dispatch renovation. We could could use those on salaries, we have not in the last couple of years in anticipation of utilizing that money to actually expand the dispatch center. So the funding for the dispatcher salaries has actually come out of both the Kix and Fire budget over the last several years, because this planning started for the dispatch renovation approximately twenty seventeen, twenty-two. And you'll be seeing more of that in the next few months. FCC proposed administrative changes. So as I said, currently the funds under Michigan law allows these funds to be used for radio systems, mobile data computers, and other other items that are related to dispatch center. Currently, the FCC is actually proposing a rule that will not allow us to use funds for anything else other than dispatch council itself. So I know the Conference of Western Wayne and many police and fire chiefs organizations have been putting together resolutions to try to sell the FCC that this isn't the proper way to do this, because Michigan is always, and especially our department, has always utilized the funds in the proper manner. Looking at the significant changes, as we talk radios, about fifty thousand dollars for the radios will be purchased for both police and fire. Again, just to replace older radios and upgrade some of the mobile data or and car. Dispatch center, we talked a lot about that and we'll be talking a lot more in the future. We will, the expansion of dispatch center has about grown and we haven't created this dispatch center many years ago, and we've started to plan by taking funds from the nine-one-one budget, fees and actually holding them in advance in anticipation of actually utilizing it to expand our dispatch center. Along with that, we'll have many different technology upgrades when it comes to expanding that dispatch center, because we have moved that many, many years ago and it's been a discussion that's gone on for many years in order to make it an efficient center that can actually service our public better. They do a very good job now, again, a lot of times they're the first point of contact for our citizens, and they really handle them in a great way. This will make and improve their ability to do that. Without any questions.
Kate. Thanks. I think this is for Director Bob, but I was wondering, the forfeiture funds, are they restricted in how they can be spent?
Certainly, depending on what forfeiture we're talking about, they're restricted based on, if it's from the drug fine, it's from on, so we follow the federal requirements as it relates to what they can use it for. For instance, I couldn't take money to buy a fire truck, it has to be something that basically you have to use it for something that helps in this investigation of drug crime, potentially if it's a drug forfeiture, that could include buildings even. So cars, vehicles, you can't use it for salary and you can't sub-plant the budget for the police department with forfeiture funds. You can use it to improve the service.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Steven? You're on mute.
Bad night for me and the mute button. Thanks for the presentation, guys. Always great to see what's going on in your department as well. And the only question I had for the deputy chief on the phone company revenue that comes in, do you have an idea of what percent that of the dispatch center that covers the costs of?
So for?
Everything that sounds.
Are you saying as far as the renovation or the current operation?
The operation, I'm sorry. I, yeah, because that's what it looked like it was used for, the operation.
It's used for the operations. Again, we get about four hundred and seventy thousand and that normally, if we were to utilize that to operate the dispatch center, it wouldn't cover all the expenses that go along with it.
Would not?
No.
Okay.
Our ability to save that over the last few years will really offset the expansion of the dispatch center. We have to be cautious, it has restricted use too, so we can't build a weight room with it, you know, so we have to use it properly.
I can break it down and get you the total cost of operating the special.
I think it's important for the board to realize too, like when I started here in ninety-six, it was transactional, go from point A to point B. That dispatch center has gone through a maturation like the professional policing has, where it's like a crime center, right? Real-time crime center where they're solving crimes or helping police solve crimes before they get there and connecting the dots, providing all types of nine-one-one services that were not in place many, many years ago. So technology is, everyone knows here, it's really changed. And that's, that's, we've already improved a lot of that already, but probably upgrading is the next step, the next progression, the next maturation point for our employees in that room and for our citizens.
Thank you.
Summer?
Quick question. So the four hundred and seventy thousand that we get for the dispatch, will that increase next year with the reallocation of the census dollars?
It should, because it's based on percentages, so yes, more than likely.
Okay, thank you.
Great. Anyone else? All right, thank you for the presentation. Wendy, who do you have next?
Director Hohenberger is up next.
Who do you need promoted?
Could you please promote Jeanette Iello and John LaFever? Brad Sharp is already in, yep.
Okay, great.
Very good, thank you. So we have about a hundred and twenty-seven slides to go through tonight.
Oh, no.
Oh, you cut it down from last year, nice.
Yeah, yeah, we shortened it up for you this year. I am going to follow last year's model that worked very well. I kind of broke it up for you and I have a video to show for you all to kind of just let you enjoy that and then followed by a handful of slides and questions from there. But introduce the folks, just because I don't know that all of you have met, we have John LaFever, our deputy director with us tonight. Brad Sharp is on somewhere, yeah, there he is, he's all red now, he's just embarrassed to be here. So Brad Sharp is our project manager and Jeanette Iello is with us. She is our budget supervisor and she manages, helped really pull all this information together and work with all of us to make it look good. So with that, I will share my screen and flip over to the video. If this works. You all able to see the video?
Yes.
Okay, very good. We will go.
As the Canton community feels the continued impact of the COVID pandemic, Canton Leisure Services remains dedicated to striving for excellence and providing nationally recognized services, distinct spaces, as well as recreation and wellness opportunities that reflect and connect our unique community. This past year has presented challenging times that have required much flexibility and responsiveness to develop new ways of serving the Canton community. In two thousand and twenty, we all felt the effects of our facilities being closed and programs and events canceled. To date, many programs and activities have been reinvented and relaunched in a modified or virtual manner. Our parks, trails, and golf courses have also seen unprecedented use, and many of our facilities have reopened with modified service levels. As we press on during this pandemic, many of leisure services programs and services may be impacted well into two thousand and twenty-one and beyond. And through it all, leisure services staff is finding ways to ensure that our vibrant Canton community stays active and healthy during these trying times. In the face of these current challenges, leisure services staff continues to build on the momentum achieved from Canton Township's ability to preserve, adjust, transform, and innovate. In order to continue providing the high-quality recreation opportunities, services, facilities, and park amenities that have played a vital role in making Canton Township a desirable place to live, work, and play, leisure services remains focused on strategic, long-term planning. In two thousand and twenty-one, leisure services will undertake an extensive master plan development process that will identify key priorities and provide clear direction over the next five years. The development of this master plan is built upon community and stakeholder input, which began in two thousand and twenty with a community survey and needs assessment. Throughout the master planning process, the Canton Board of Trustees and community members will be given opportunities to provide input on this living and working document. Once finalized, the master plan will focus on the sustainable infrastructure and goals for all of leisure services assets. Based on these results, in two thousand and twenty-two, leisure services will mark on a strategic plan update, which establishes a course of action by developing goals and tactics to support leisure services facilities, programs, and services. Together, the master plan and strategic plan ensure that leisure services remains flexible, dynamic, and responsive to the ever-changing needs of our community. Both plans are requirements for leisure services to remain eligible for grants as well as national accreditation through the Commission for Accreditation of Parks and Recreation Agencies. Canton Leisure Services also continues to focus on community connectivity. Staff is currently working with the Municipal Services Department to systematically fill high-priority sidewalk and trail gaps in an effort to provide an increased pedestrian access to Canton's parks. Leisure Services also remains dedicated to pursuing its goal of making high-quality parks accessible to all residents within a ten-minute walk. The recent COVID-nineteen outbreak has truly underscored the importance of open green spaces with a renewed appreciation of parks and trails when visits to these outdoor areas became the only real relief for many residents to engage in physical activity or enjoy a change of scenery. One of the primary ways to ensure accessibility to these open green spaces is to continue to create safe pathways to all of our parks within the Canton community. Access via these pedestrian pathways remains a top priority as well as access to public transportation. In two thousand and twenty-two, leisure services plans to conduct a transportation strategic plan. Through this analysis, Canton will gain a clear picture of its public transportation needs and identify appropriate goals for improving access to public spaces, healthcare, businesses, and other local regional resources. Part of the development of this plan will be to collect valuable input from multiple sources, including residents, board members, and other elected officials. An ongoing priority is leisure services' commitment to protecting our environment. Leisure Services continually implements environmental sustainable practice and strategies to improve our parks and golf courses. Over the next few years, Canton's tree management program will continue to collect the data and analysis needed to determine cost-effective levels of funding for tree maintenance and tree planting. These proactive measures will ensure that tree preservation techniques are implemented now so that future generations will be able to enjoy even more green landscapes. In response to the assault on wetlands by phragmities, an invasive plant that has had a massive impact on the ecological health of Michigan's wetlands, staff continues to implement a management plan that will help prevent, detect, and eradicate this aggressive species. If left untreated, this species will continue to grow and crowd out native plants, creating a dense jungle vegetation that will continue to spread, possibly ensuring that future generations will not inherit healthy natural areas. Canton Leisure Services continues to monitor national leisure, recreation, health, and wellness best practices in an effort to remain progressive in our approach to creating innovative programs. By continually reviewing national standards, staff ensures that leisure services consistently maintains a high level of successful delivery of services. Frequent review of these statistics illustrates that our department regularly exceeds the national standards of best practices. One example is the fiscal responsibility maintenance tool, the Cost Recovery Model, which compares revenues to operating expenditures. The current national parks and recreation cost recovery average is just twenty-nine percent, while the best practice of gold medal agencies average is thirty-five percent. In comparison, in two thousand and twenty-two, leisure services is budgeting cost recovery at forty-six percent. To enhance revenue, Canton Leisure Services actively solicits and secures alternate funding opportunities such as grants, donations, and sponsorships to help offset the costs of providing programs, implementing capital projects, and expanding programs and services. Staff is currently applying for grants and alternative funding for several projects forecasted over the next two years. The focus of these additional funds have been placed on enhancing The focus of these additional funds have been placed on enhancing community members' experience through the addition of inclusive playground amenities, improved park spaces, trail and pathway connectivity maintenance, and program support for therapeutic recreation, youth and teens, as well as seniors. For example, this year, Leisure Services will be applying for a Michigan DNR Recreation Passport Grant to transform Victory Park's playscape in 2022 to include accessible playground features, a new warm-up area, and new sand volleyball courts. By improving these amenities, Leisure Services will be able to provide a more enjoyable drop-in park in the southern part of Canton as well as fulfill an unmet need of closer access to a local park for community members who reside near Michigan Avenue. In addition, the proposed plan for CDBG and Wayne County Parks Village Funds will be focused on Heritage Park over the next two years. These funds will be used to provide additional rest with space as well as incorporate new universally accessible playground amenities. Canton residents recognize Leisure Services as a vital part of our growing community. We remain dedicated to providing our neighbors with exceptional programs, services, recreation facilities, and green spaces that contribute to a high quality of life. Your support of these 2022 initiatives will help to ensure that children can actively engage in nature, seniors can benefit from a supportive safe haven, artists can share their talents to a wider audience, players can enhance their skills through lessons and tournaments, families can make lasting memories, and everyone can enjoy our unique public spaces.
Okay, and now just a handful of slides to run through some of the details that that supports. Let me switch over to that presentation. Okay, um, so this is our overall general fund budget for all of our activities that fall under the one-on-one general fund shows our revenue and subsidy, obviously, our revenue and expenses. And then overall subsidy, obviously, the 2020 actuals vary quite quite a bit different than our twenty-one and twenty-two projected numbers as the COVID-19 pandemic had quite an effect on our overall budget, staying fairly consistent across the board here. The majority for twenty-one and twenty-two, the majority of our changes are a result of increases in fixed costs such as salaries and wages and fringe benefits. The video talked a little bit about improvements that we're proposing for Victory Park that are included in the budget. We're including our matching portion of the grant. This will be, it'll be a fifty-fifty match that we're proposing through the DNR. So a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the DNR fund and a hundred and forty thousand dollars from the general fund. That'll be this grant application will actually be coming to the board next week for approval to apply for the grant. And then we also have Heritage Park Projects in 2021. It's at a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for, that'll be funded through Wayne County. The Community Center Fund again stays fairly consistent from twenty-one to twenty-two. Again, twenty-twenty, you see a significant change there. Again, from the changes in operations, we're hopeful and optimistic that by the time we get back to twenty-twenty-two, we'll be back to our full operations. The only capital that we show in this budget is fitness center equipment, forty-eight thousand dollars per year, and those are typically lease payments that we have. We have multiple leases for fitness equipment that we swap out every three years so that we can keep that equipment on a regular cycle of replacement. We replace that equipment as the warranty expires so we don't run the risk of having downtime for that equipment. And then we can stay current with the latest equipment for our members as well. Cable television, this is primarily supported through paid fees and franchise fees here. The, the big difference that you'll notice from twenty-twenty onto twenty-one and twenty-two stems from capital. In twenty-twenty, we did a large purchase of some studio equipment and video projection system. And then you'll see some, some smaller capital items in twenty-one and twenty-two for editing computers and then upgraded equipment for the boardroom for board meetings coming in twenty-twenty-two. The golf fund actually did not suffer near as much as the other funds in twenty-twenty for our revenue and expenses. You'll actually see that twenty-twenty, especially at Pheasant Run, was a banner year for us. We're projecting revenue a little bit lower in twenty-one and twenty-two than what we received in twenty-twenty as we can't expect to continually set records every year. But that was a fantastic year at Pheasant Run. Fellows Creek also had a great year. Their, their numbers just were a little bit lower. Because even though their greens fees were up, their banquet services suffered more than Pheasant Run as Pheasant Run doesn't have much of a banquet operation. And Fellows Creek does have a much larger banquet. So weddings and outings, the food and beverage side of their operations suffered a bit more than Pheasant Run. In twenty-twenty-two, you'll notice that the CIP portion, CIP projects start showing up in the, the fund. For that, Director Trumbull can probably expand on some of the accounting rules as to why the CIP items show up in these particular funds if the board has any questions on those items. Other capital that we have in our community improvement budget is three hundred, total three hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year for paved surface maintenance, roof systems, and mechanical systems. Typically, these are for repair kit, like paved surf myth, pardon me, paved surface maintenance. We'll focus on crack ceiling and restryping a couple of years after a parking lot gets replaced. Hot hole repairs, those types of things. Roofing systems are not a total roof replacement, but those would be for large repairs to any roof systems that aren't, that aren't included in our CIP budget. And the same thing for mechanical systems. If we have any rooftop units or any of our larger pumps, those sorts of things that we need larger repairs on. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. Any questions? Steven, you're, I see you start to talk, but you're on mute. I'm telling you first.
I was about to unmute. Tell me. No, I was just wondering. How, I, I don't have the numbers now in front of me that you put up for the summit and programming and things like that. But I thought it went up this year and then down a little next year. And I wasn't sure if, because I figured that programming is still down this year.
Are you talking in the summit particularly or recreation?
I think it was recreation. That wasn't this chart. It wasn't general. Keep going. Maybe it wasn't. Oh, yeah, it was cable television. That's right. It was, the revenues are up this year. But then come down next year. And I was wondering what caused that.
Um, I believe that has to do with the, the franchise fees agreement and Director Trumbull can probably speak better to that than I can honestly because more involved in the revenue. That's not something that we have much control over. It has to do, it also has to do with the volume of subscriptions or folks that are utilizing the cable services and Comcast and Wow and those types of service providers are actually seeing a decrease in usage as people are using a lot more streaming service. I see Director Trumbull click back. She might be able to provide more information if you have further questions.
Yeah, including the twenty-twenty is a little premature now because we don't get the last quarter's franchise fees until, you know, later. The, the quarterly franchise fees come in later, so they just have not received them before they added that revenue number into, into that slide. So we should still be receiving one more quarters worth of revenue. So if that's three quarters at one point.
The, the projection went down for twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two, it went down because of the franchise fee, but twenty-twenty, it didn't really, it shouldn't have gone up drastically from twenty-twenty to twenty-twenty-one. That, that variance. Twenty-twenty-two, we do expect it to go down. The franchise fee is going down because people are streaming. And they don't have the same cable franchise fees. If, if the cable company's not collecting the franchise fees, we're not gonna go, we're not gonna collect the revenue.
We talked about that in, in the session or last month. So now I remember.
Yeah, when the RBA went to the board. Yeah.
And Greg, what did you have for Community Center that, and programming in general? That I would expect twenty-twenty-two to be better than twenty-twenty-one because you're gonna be up against it for the first half.
Right. So we did not make amendments to the twenty-twenty-one budget at this point. So these are kind of pre-COVID numbers for twenty-twenty-one.
I see. Okay.
So we'll likely have to come back for amendments to the twenty-twenty-one budget because we just, it, it's hard to project right now until we get back to our kind of a, a regular usage and kind of see how people respond. Once we get fully open and we just don't know when that will be, honestly.
Okay, that makes sense now. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Um, Director Hohenberger, can we look at those slides that have to do with the golf courses?
Sure can.
Um, so at Pheasant Run, you were able to, or the course was able to stay open later this year.
Yes.
I think because of the, the weather cooperated, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And did that thing happen at Fellows Creek? Was it kept open longer or no?
Yeah, so Fellows Creek operates a little bit differently since they do allow folks to walk their course. They never, they, they don't have a complete closure like we do at Pheasant Run. They've actually had, I'm not sure if they were able to make it this year, but they have had, I believe it's like four years in a row where they've had at least one round of golf every month for but February this year was gonna be tough. I'm not sure if anybody weekend or not. I like them anything, but they do, there's one gentleman out there that he prides himself on golfing at least once a month.
Okay, I have, um, have you ever thought about, and I don't know how feasible it is, opening early in case?
We absolutely do.
Okay.
Yep, we, we always shoot for, we kind of target Good Friday as our opening, but if the weather cooperates and things are looking good, we will open early.
Okay. All right. And then I also think that, um, and I don't have any proof of this, but I'll ask what your opinion is. Because there were so few things to do when, when there, we were in the midst of the lockdown and golf at one point was one of the few things that people could do. Do you think that that also led to the increase?
Absolutely. Yeah, that had, uh, if we could, from, from a golf standpoint, this was kind of a nationwide thing from talking with our partners that manage Fellows Creek as well. They manage hundreds of golf courses across the country and they kind of saw the same thing that if we could just eliminate all of our competition from every, every other recreation or golf will have another really good year. We, we don't want that to happen again, but it certainly did benefit the golf industry when there was nothing else you could do. You spent a lot of time golfing. But we also had done, made a concerted, concerted effort. Fellows Creek, we really learned from our management partners there about how they were maximizing league revenue and they were a couple of years ahead of us. And we've really focused on that the last few years at Pheasant Run is increasing our league enrollment and that gives us a lot more secure revenue. Because as weather dependent, even if there's a little bit of rain, people will come out. But if you're depending on, excuse me, drop-in activity only, if the weather isn't quite as nice, people just don't choose to go out. So that increase in league play has really helped give us a little more secure revenue stream at Pheasant Run, which so we're seeing more increases at Pheasant Run than Fellows Creek, but that's not to say Fellows Creek hasn't done the same thing. They just did it a few years before Pheasant Run. So they've kind of peaked as far as the number of leagues prior to what Pheasant Run could do.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Michael, go ahead.
So I see you're bringing up that DNR grant at Victory, Victory Park. Can you talk about why you chose Victory Park? Because I'll just, I know on the south side of Michigan Avenue, there is zero residential over there. And so when we talk about wanting to have a ten-minute walk to a park, we talk about wanting to have walkability in the community and eliminating park deserts. I'm just curious how this park got chosen.
Yeah, so there, there's not as much residential within walking distance there, but there are a fair amount of homes that are in the area. And Michigan Avenue is a kind of a fairly accessible area. And right now, the focus of this grant is to increase the drop-in activity opportunities at the Sports Center Victory Park. Right now, there really isn't much to do out there except go play a league game and go for a tournament. So during the day in the summertime, there's not a lot of usage out there. And we really want to increase that opportunity and take advantage of the public space that we have there and have a nicer playground and practice area. And to be honest, it also benefits the, the teams that are out there. If you're out there, you know, dad's in a Thursday night league and the family wants to come out, it's certainly a much more enjoyable experience if there's activities there for the kids to do instead of just sitting there watching dad relive his glory days running the bases for sure.
I, I would also add CSC has become, the Canton Sports Center has become a major regional draw for us. The tournament business is quite large. It brings a lot of people to Canton, probably in the tens of thousands, up to a hundred thousand people a year. And so as tournaments have increased, it's been a long time since we really invested in that facility. Kind of like all of our, our spaces, right? We're, we're kind of committed to our buildings, our facilities. And that again is a, is a nice regional draw. It's a destination for players all over the, not only the state of Michigan, but kind of regionally from other states that come in as well. So we really want to enhance that facility and, and as Greg mentioned, kind of add to the experience that people have while they're there at the site and make them want to come back. And it's, you know, it helps. It's one of our facilities that we drive revenue out of. And the tournament business is certainly one aspect that we do that. So it really helps us again can capitalize on some of the, the traffic that's there and, and make an investment in one of our great facilities.
And at the same time, we're using the, the Wayne County Village dollars at Heritage Park or proposing to use the Wayne County dollars at Heritage Park this year. We use the Wayne County Village dollars the last two years over at Preservation Park. We're applying, gonna be applying for CDBG dollars for more accessible playgrounds, playground equipment at North Pavilion. It continue expanding that say universally accessible playground.
Is there any plan for putting any type of play structure or anything that's interactive at Patriot Park? I know the people who bought into Parkside, the neighborhood to the west have been waiting for some of the park. And then additionally, across the street there at Ridge, you've got the waiting for some of the park. And then additionally across the street there at Ridge, you've got the sizable number of apartments.
Yes, yeah, so we, we do have that in the Patriot Park Master Plan, but we don't have any funding dedicated for that in this, in these budgets. Certainly if the board would like to explore that. Some of the obstacles we're faced with are some of the infrastructure pieces that need to get done prior to putting in some playscape out there that are kind of the, the not so fun pieces that cost a lot of money to get it ready to be able to put in a, a play structure out there. But that's certainly something that we could explore and will be part of our master planning process that's coming up next year as well to, or this year, not next year, the master planning process will be this year. And really getting an idea from the board as well as citizens as to what the timeframe may be as to when we would like to pursue doing some development at Patriot Park. That's kind of been a park that's been on the back burner for a number of years. I think it's been over 20 years that we've owned that property and it hasn't gotten the funding for development yet.
The master planning process will be coming toward the board at the end of March or beginning of April with a recommendation for a consultant that we would like to bring on to conduct our five-year park master plan. And the goal is that in the springtime or early summer was, would be when we solicit the input from the board and the community on what kind of recreation amenities, both passive and active, they'd like to see throughout the community and in which regions. And then also a component of it that we'd like to see is more connectivity plans and pathway plans and things like that. So we'll be bringing that recommendation of the consultant towards the end of the month and then in the springtime, be meeting with all of you to see what kind of things you'd like to see incorporated into that master plan.
Could you please get just like a high level summary of what needs to be done at that present, at the, what's called the Patriot Park in order to put playscapes and things like that? What has to be done first?
Sure, we can do that.
Are you talking about like a bathroom, like sewer and water? Is that what you're, what you're talking about?
Yeah, and paving.
Like paving the road?
Parking lots, yeah. The road access and parking lots. And then a lot of site grading. Brad, do you might be able to talk to that a little bit better?
Yeah, we're also looking at electrical infrastructure, like put some lighting in.
Oh, good.
So you could, you know, these separate kits and all that thing, all that, so. And then the irrigation system would be a great benefit to, to grow grass, make it neater or mowing it cleaner.
Point, hadn't even thought about the electrical piece off the top of my head. But yeah, we can pull together a kind of a high level summary of what it would take to get something like that done.
Okay. Did you have anything else, Michael, or any other board members? Okay. All right. Thank you for the presentation. Anything else, Wendy?
Uh, yeah, I will start sharing my screen to wrap it up. I'm sure everybody's tired. It's a lot of information to see, so I will go through my slides relatively quickly, but stop me if I'm going too fast or if you have any questions. And one moment, I'm trying to pull my notes up too. Okay. Um, so here's kind of where we left off in my slide presentation and it is at the capital project. So I'm going to come back around and summarize everything at a high level and kind of show you where the funds are ending up with the requested budgets. As far as the capital projects for 2022 requested, this first slide is all, has already all been covered from everybody. So Director Holmberger, most of these fell on his on this first slide. And on the second slide, I'm going to highlight a couple items here. A lot of it is some computer replacements and minor dollar amounts, but the ones we haven't talked about are the IT department items that are, which are larger. We always put in a contingency in capital for the IT just because we're not sure what's going to come up in any, in any individual year. Plus with planning and trying to figure out what priorities we might have, we, we always put some money there because when something does come up, it's expensive. So we've got $30,000 of contingency in there. At this point in time, we have, I think we spoke about this prior, but we do have a computer replacement plan that we replace all the computers over a four-year cycle to try to keep the technology up and running. That's a newer plan that we instituted the last couple of years. One of the things we are looking into is the leasing instead of buying computers. We don't really have an, an answer on that yet to see what benefit that would have to the township, but we are taking a look at that. And we also have Rico copiers that we purchased the Ricos in IT for all of the departments in the township. So depending on how old they are, there's a plan on when, when those are purchased. And we typically replace those every five to seven years. The public safety, this is the public safety capital again, Director Stockline and Ba went over all of the capital items that they have in their budget. So I'm going to move past that. This slide right here shows the debt schedule out for the next 10 years. And I believe in 2031, at this point in time is when our last debt is paid off at this point in time. So it shows it, the governmental funds, so that's obviously our general fund type items, our special revenue and our public safety bonds. So our, our big bond issue that we issued this year, the $16 million bond, for the most part is all in this non-public safety line item. It's going to move once we actually know where the project dollars are getting spent. So, for example, it's all of it's in public safety, although, or in non-public safety, but we know right now that the improvements to the police side of the building are going to be utilized with bond money. So once we figure out the exact dollar amount, we will allocate that and move that to the public safety. So the total of it's in non-public safety unless it's already been allocated. So you can see that the next three years or two years, we have a pretty significant debt payment. We've got 7.8 and 7.8 million those next two years and 22 and 23. And then it drops down on 24 to 4.2 million dollars. That's because our old bond issue from, that we issued in 2003 will roll off the books at that point in time. Um, so here I want to cover, here's where the total revenues are for each of the funds. And I'm going to focus on primarily the differences between the 2021 adopted budget and the 2022 proposed budget at this point in time. You'll also see that I don't have the 2020 actuals in here because we are going through the audit. We do still know there's adjustments coming. And we're not quite ready to have those numbers yet. So we, we plugged in the 2020 amended budget column at this point in time. So the revenue for the general fund is up about 70, excuse me, $788,000. That's primarily due to property taxes of about 368,000. Our state shared revenue being up about $250,000 and then some permit revenue up about $140,000. Our roads fund is up a couple hundred thousand dollars. That's again, just due to the property taxes increase. If you notice though, I'll highlight this because it's a pretty big decline. In 2020, we have the 7.7 million and it looks like it's going down. That's because we actually had $1.9 million in intergovernmental agreements from the county in 2020 that we currently do not have budgeted for 2021 or 2022. The fire fund revenue is up $553,000. It's actually, property tax revenue is actually up about $700,000, but some of the grant, the safer grant is going to roll off. So that decreased our grant revenue for 2022. The police funds up about 1.1 million and that is strictly all 100% of property taxes. Community center fund revenue is up about a million dollars. That's really $900,000 of that is a general fund subsidy though, to make sure they're meeting their obligations. So that in, that increase is because of general fund revenue. It's not because of operationally, they're going to make more money. That is a subsidy from the general fund to help pay for their capital needs and the debt service that they're incurring on the current projects that are going on. Going down the list, street lighting, that's our, where our homeowners associations and we have some special assessments for street lighting in the community. That's strictly the revenue coming in from those homes, the residential areas and paying the DTE bill. So this is intended to break even. We aren't making money on that. We're just passing through the bills for them. Cable TV, we talked about already that that revenue is going down. We're expecting that to go down. Community improvement fund, this is where we pay our 2003 debt that's issued. So that $2.3 million is the bond payment. DDA, we include here because we have to adopt that budget as well, but that is property tax revenue in the DDA and they give us those numbers. 911 Fund, Director Ba and Wilshire spoke about those. This organized crime enforcement, this is a, this is a fund that we are the fiduciary for that is in Detroit. So this is again, this is revenue that they bring in, that they pay us to pay rent on their behalf in Detroit. So this is, this is nothing that we charge for. CDBG, this is an estimate, estimation of what grant revenue we'll get. The debt service is revenue from the various funds that are helping to pay off a bond that was issued in 2013, I believe.
Director Trumbull, the CDBG in 2020, why is that so high up?
That is because we got the COVID allocation. So we've got two different COVID allocations for about $500,000 total plus the 300,000. Plus we rolled some of that NSP dollars over to, to do the park down at a, or over at Kaepernick. So we utilize some CDBG dollars from that. We transferred it from this 276, which didn't have revenue in it, but they had fund balance there. We transferred it from 276 into the CDBG fund.
Got it, thanks.
You're welcome. The capital projects that service fund, this, this is where we're going to be paying out our new debt issues for the $10 million. So that's revenue coming in from the various funds to help pay down that debt. Excuse me, the $16 million fund. We have $2.8 million of revenue budgeted in the CIP fund in '22. So this is of the CIP fund that the board had previously adopted. We weren't planning to issue debt at this point in time in 2022. We're going to fund those from the various funds. So that's revenue coming in from the individual funds who are doing those projects to pay for those projects. Golf course fund, the revenue is staying relatively consistent from 2021. We budgeted to transfer a million dollars from the general fund into the golf course. Water and sewer fund, Director Smith talked about this a little bit and the fact that his expenses went up in the water and sewer fund. So we basically balance the revenue to make sure that we're collecting enough water and sewer rates to cover our expenses. So it's kind of a plug figure, you know, as we just, as we spoke about earlier about the water and sewer rate study that will be coming to the board in a couple of weeks, that, that revenue will change depending on how, where we think we need the rates to be. So that's a placeholder for the budget purposes. The garbage and rubbish collections is at $4.7 million, a little bit higher than last year. That's what we charge our residents for the solid waste pickup. Fleet maintenance, this comes from the other funds who utilize the fleet that we have at the township. Post-employment benefits that, again, it's a fund that we transfer all of the money from the different funds who are paying for the retiree healthcare and then we pay it out of that fund. So that's a transfer from other funds. And the special assessment debt service are outstanding. The revenue we get from that is from the outstanding assessments that we have for areas such as Lexington and Weathersfield and different areas that we've had special assessments. Is that the next one? Just give us a slide. This graph or slide just shows kind of a pictorial over the last six years of a percentage of our overall budget and with, you know, what areas it is representing. So if you, if you look, the general fund is this light blue one on the bottom. We have ranged, you know, from 19% to the top of 24% over the last six years. So in 2022, the general fund of all of the revenue, or excuse me, expenses that we're budgeting is about 22% of the overall. Public safety, and this combines both police and fire is 29% of the total. That's ranged anywhere the low end of 26% to 33%. That, this is combining the summit or community center fund and the golf course. They're at 6% in 2022. The solid waste has, has been 3%, stable 3% all these years. Water and sewer is about 26%. Again, right in the ballpark where it's always been capital. This is the CIP, they're 4%. Roads is about 4%, has been pretty stable. And then the other, the other funds we just talked about make up the remaining 6% of it. This also is a pie chart comparing the, you know, just another way to look at what I just showed you. This breaks out all of the funds individually into a different picture format. I'm not going to spend time going over that, but I'm going to spend some time looking at, I guess we can look at it here. It'll make the next one go a little bit easier. The general fund, our difference, the actual expenses in the general fund are going up between 21 and 22 by 3.5 million dollars. The majority of that increase, about $600,000 of it, has to do with salaries and fringes. OPAD, medical and prescriptions, each of those are up about $100,000 and the rest of it is just the normal salary increases. The roads fund increase of $200,000, that's just an increase in the projects based on the property taxes we are estimating to collect. The fire fund, oh, let me go back to the general fund. I'm sorry, I said this, I said the salaries and wages, which was only 600,000 of the 3.5 million dollar increase. There's also, we're increasing our transfers out by about $2.9 million, which is a big chunk of that increase. 2.2 million of that is because of the CIP. We also increased the transfer to the community center fund by 900,000. But our debt service on the flip side did decrease a little bit by 200,000. So the majority of that increase is because of transferring for CIP and the community center fund. Going back to the fire fund, the fire fund's expenses are increasing about $1.3 million. About, almost $800,000 of that are the wages and fringe estimation. And then the capital that Director Stockline had spoken about with some of the vehicles. Police increased about $1.6 million, $1.7 million. But 1.5 of that is actually due to salaries, wages and fringes. So the majority of that is just the contractual increases. The community center and golf course fund is up by about $1.7 million. That is as a result of, for the most part, the debt service from the bond issue as well as capital that is needed in 2022. In conjunction with the CIP, the golf course fund also had a $670,000 increase in capital. This one is a little bit deceiving. Our CIP is going down by $3 million. That's just the timing of the CIP plan that we had presented to the board. So we have it really heavy front loaded these first two years. And then this would be the third year of that plan and, and that would decrease by about $3 million. Water and sewer fund, Director Smith had already spoke about garbage and rubbish. He also spoke about, and then our overall other, all the other funds decreased by about $167,000. So looking at this, this slide, which is very similar to the revenue, but now it's the total expenditures. We've already really covered this. The general fund is going from 2.9 to 3, excuse me, 29.6 million to 33.2 million. Roads is going up to 200,000 from 6 million to 6.2. Fire fund 17.3 to 18.6. The police, 24.6 to 26.2. And, and going down the line, we, we really spoke about these on the previous slide, what the differences were caused from. But for the most part, going down the line, again, here's where the CIP was. We budgeted in 2027.4 million in CIP. 21 was 5.8 and see, you can see that that one went down by the $3 million down to 2.8. Golf course fund, again, we spoke about that increase and that's due to the capital, the $670,000 of capital they have budgeted. Water and sewer, we spoke about. Fleet, we spoke about and, and the, the, I guess we didn't really talk about the special assessment debt service. These would be the outstanding bonds on those special assessments that we have issued. So this, this slide is going to show where we are projecting our 2022 fund balance to be if we actually spent, if the revenue comes in as we budgeted and the expenses come in as we budgeted, where would our fund balance be at the end of 2022? where would our fund balance be at the end of 2022? So we start out with where our 2021 fund balance is going to be, which is based on that budget as well. So our, we budget, and we'll talk about this on the next, which is the last slide after this one. We historically budget very conservatively and end up much better. So this, I would envision, you know, barring anything drastic, this is a very conservative ending fund balance. So at the end of 2022, if we spend everything that we thought we were going to and using the fund balance that we were expecting, our fund balance in the General Fund would be about $10 million. That's almost a 30% fund balance or about a 30% fund balance. And our board, board policy, established policy in the past has been 15%. So our fund balance would still be healthy at the end of 2022. So we have room for maneuvering if we need to. The Roads Fund Balance here is at $2.3 million. That's going to change. This is as it was budgeted. Because we are, we did collect some of the property tax money upfront and had, didn't do all the projects yet. So we, we envisioned at some point in time that fund balance is going to go down. But right now, at the end of '22, based on the budget, it'd be at 2.3 million. Fire Fund would be at about 3 million. Police would be about 4.6. And really, that what, really what we want to look at or what, you know, we're concerned about right now is making sure all of these are positive. And based on this budget, they are all positive. The Community Improvement Fund right here is also a big number, 6.3 million. That was very intentional that we would have fund balance set aside for the capital. If you recall, we had that $2.8 million of capital from the CIP in 2022. In 2022, the 6.3 million of fund balance can help pay for that if, if we need to pay for that. I mean, we will need to pay for it, but we can utilize these available funds here to do that. One of the questions that was asked prior to this study session tonight was a description of what each of these funds does and what we use, how we use all these and how we can spend these dollars. Our Budget Manager had already put together some kind of a draft description of all of these. And I just didn't get a chance to look that over and finalize that. So we will send out and included in future budget documents, a description of, here's the legal restrictions for all these funds and here's what we are using them for, just to help the board understand where, you know, the purpose of all these funds are. Cause I know some of them are kind of confusing and it would kind of help to have a description of that. So that will be coming in the next couple of weeks. Lastly, I wanted to talk about, show the board how we have historically budgeted fund balance and how fund balances ended up. So we've got the last five years shown here. So you can see every year, so here's what we had actually budgeted to either transfer to fund balance or use. So if we, if it's negative, we are budgeting to use fund balance. So we are expecting our expenses to be more than our revenue. If it's positive, we expected our revenue to be higher than our expenses. If you look over on this last column, you can see for the General Fund, based on how we budgeted and how we've ended up, we have ranged anywhere from 3.4 million to $5.5 million better than we have budgeted in each of these years. Fire Fund is very similar. And so is the Police Fund. So while we, while we show these numbers and they're big numbers and we're showing that, you know, we are budgeting to use fund balance in a lot of these situations, at the end of the day, because we do budget conservatively, we don't end up spending everything that, that we do have in the budget. And that, you know, the purchases, just to keep in mind that anything that's over $10,000 still come to the board for individual approval. So while this is a kind of a roadmap and the maximum authorized, limited, the board is authorizing anybody, any department or anybody to spend money on. Individual purchases still have to come before the board before, before we do that. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? I can't, some people have their screens off. Just let you know, we can't see you. Oh, sorry, Michael.
When did you say curiosity? And pardon me if you said this, but when will we have an idea of how we finished 2020?
We are wrapping up, the audit starts in two weeks, on March 15th. So, you know, as we finish up our last journal entries and in like the item, like on the cable revenue that we had not yet received, the fourth quarter revenue fee. Those, as those items come in, our numbers will be final. So I will expect to have a, you know, we typically have done those in the past on the quarterly budget to actual reports that we've shown, at least the full-time electeds. I will plan on having some numbers out to the board in the next couple of weeks with where I expect that to finish up. I actually expect 2020 to finish very well for all of the funds, for a few reasons. But I will expect to have some numbers out for that in the next couple of weeks.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Summer, Summer Sand.
Hey Wendy, I know that the, that the, that they had a budget revenue estimating conference probably about six weeks ago or so. And I wondered if they gave any indication on what communities we're going to get through revenue sharing this year.
Yeah, they, they actually said for 2021, they estimated 2%. One of the, one of the factors of it was 1.8% increase. And I can't remember if that was a constitutional or the statutory piece of revenue sharing and the other one was a 2%. That's what they're expecting it to grow. Ours will grow by more than that because of the census adjustment and our population has gone up. So minimally, it'll be 2%. I, we haven't budgeted it. I would anticipate that it will likely go up by another half a million dollars on top of the 2%. But I don't want to commit to that yet. We haven't budgeted it yet. And we won't hear that until probably May, April, May timeframe is when we'll find out for sure what that is.
And how does that work if the census numbers are delayed? Do you know that?
I do. They, the state will go back and make an adjustment forever, for all the communities. So it does go back to a specific date, but they will do a one-time like lump payment or reduce in other communities' payment, at least if it's, if it's, has been done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Steven?
Thank you to you and everyone who presented tonight. Although after watching the Golden Globes last night, I have a feeling that we'll want to implement playoff music. Some of the presentations, no, they were all very good.
I hope not mine.
Dad jokes. Those are dad jokes.
We could, we could have Carolyn like reach her arm over and we could.
But the one, the one comment I had, it wasn't really a question, as you mentioned, how conservative we budget and the fact that, that in 2022, we're budgeted, I think it was 3.6 million in the red, but more than likely will be a million or two in, in the black if, if history denotes. But that starting number you had for our fund balance is also based on two years that we haven't, that you probably conservatively budgeted as well, right? 2020 and 2021. So the starting number would be higher, most likely, especially with what you said about 2020.
Correct. One of the things that, if you recall, I also put together is a five-year projection. So when we did the CIP and we, when in July before, we talked about issuing the debt, I had shown where I was expecting us to end up at the end of the five years conservative. Well, and I think I was fairly conservative on that as well, but it's better than what the budget was showing today because the budget is conservative. So I do take a look at, you know, our salary, our full-time salaries at the end of the day typically, typically come in, like particularly in the Fire and Police, like 95% of the actual budgeted salary align. So when I look at the projections, I say, we're not going to spend 100% of the salary. It's going to be 95%, but we budget assuming we're going to pay everybody. You know, that we have no turnover based on current salary level. So we budget that based on 100%, nobody leaving. But when I project, I say, we never end up at 100% of that one. We about, we end up at 95%. So, so I do it a little bit differently and I, and I do show that to the board.
And I assume that at some point you would take a look and see after three years of adding fund balance or five years of adding fund balance, that maybe we should make adjustments to certain things, different aspects of what we spend money on. So we don't get too high in terms of a fund balance.
Right. And one of the things that I would likely, you know, we have, we have large outstanding legacy costs. And if you recall a couple of years ago, when we ended up much better, we had brought before the board an RBA to pay down, to put the $8 million into our pension plan and to pay off an additional amount of OPAD. After looking, you know, after getting comfortable with where 2020 is ending up and everything has just gotten pushed back because of COVID and the, but you know, we normally are doing this budget process a few months ago, you know, in October. I haven't finalized kind of a recommendation on that, but I, I would expect that, you know, I'll speak with Anne Marie during my weeklies, but I would expect that we will make a recommendation to pay down something, you know, legacy costs and help to, help to drive down some of those costs with our fund balance. Cause you're right, we, we certainly don't want our fund balance to be too high, especially when we know we have debt that we could be paying off.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
If nobody else is going to jump on, Wendy, can you refresh my memory? We currently transfer General Fund into the DDA, if I'm not mistaken. Do you remember how much that is? And did we ever discuss what our strategy was with that? How long we plan on doing that transfer? And are there any strings attached, if you will? Do we have any second how that money is spent?
Um. I do, we are, we have in the budget to give them $400,000 in the 20, that was in the 2020 budget. Hold on, let me see if I can pull it up really quick. We have in the neighborhood of, yes, it's $400,000 that we have in the budget to transfer to the, to the DDA. We never did talk about parameters of when that was ending. So if that's a, something the board would like to do, we can talk about that. But that was worked into the 2022 budget at that same amount, the 400,000. To my knowledge, there's, there was no parameter set from the agreement. And I don't even think there's a written agreement. I think it was just something we said we were going to do to help them out. So I don't, you know, I don't know if, I think supervisor might said on that board as well, on the DDA board, but they probably haven't talked about it. So I don't, you know, as supervisor, I don't think the previous supervisor talked about putting any specifications on what they could, what they could spend it on. I do know that they, and recall, and the board might recall as well, that they did sign an agreement with us to refund the additional revenue that they were getting on the Roads Village. So that is recorded in our Roads Fund as extra money. So any money they were making on that, they did agree to give back to us to help for the Ford Road construction as well. And that's been worked into the budget. But as far as, you know, an end date, we didn't talk about that. I don't think, besides we have a seat at the table for their budget adoption, that there's been any specific parameters on that unless somebody else recalls that, who maybe sits on the DDA board.
No, I mean, we definitely can have them even come in and present to us, you know, what they're looking for for the budget. But no, we can decide at that point or just before that.
And their budget hasn't, you know, they put a budget together, you know, but the budget that got presented here for 2022, I do not believe has gone to the DDA board yet either. We, we plugged the numbers in here just because we asked for them for the presentation, but I don't think that they've adopted or been presented with anything yet for their 2022 budget. So in other words, I don't know if they have that money necessarily earmarked for anything specific to be spent.
Right. Yeah, okay. I just, I've always been somewhat confused about our relationship with the DDA. And I know it's because it was how, how it was set up. I believe they get audited under our audit. Is that correct?
Yep.
And then I believe that the Treasurer and I also sign off or authorize on their POs and things like that. Is that, is that also correct?
Uh, yeah, you would.
However, the board itself has noticed, outside of our, the supervisor having appointing authority for the DDA, I believe. And I believe sitting on the DDA board and having one vote, we aren't a fiduciary. Like, so it's like, so we, we are, but we aren't fiduciaries of, of the, the DDA. It's, so it's weird. It's kind of like it half looks like a duck and half walks like a duck and it half quacks like a duck. It's really like, I guess it's a duck. I, I maybe, maybe it is, maybe it isn't. I'm just thinking about, you know, the, the big one is going to be this Boulevard project. And we're going to have to make some decisions about what that Boulevard is going to look like. And M.Dot's done tearing everything up and putting it all back together again. And I imagine DDA plans on having a healthy say in that project. I imagine people sitting on this board probably want to have a healthy say in, in that, that final project too. And so I'm just kind of curious about who's going to be at that table and what, where, where the money is coming from for the lighting, the walls, the landscaping. If they re-institute the irrigation and all that. I know it's a deeper conversation. Been about it before and that's a lot of Jade's wheelhouse, but.
Yeah, I, I know it was discussed, just, just from the initial conversations with Ford Road. And I don't, I don't want to put Jade on the spot because I'm not sure that he, he prepared to talk about it right now. But I know there was some conversation about replacing some of the, the retention, reducing some of the, reduce some of those costs. Cause it was going to be an exorbitant fee to replace everything that we had the same way. So I think they were talking about that a couple of years ago, but I don't know that they're there yet. So they knew it was going to be a big cost and I think they were struggling to figure out how they would pay for everything and potentially changing the way it looked. But that's, again, I was very limited and, you know, that was probably a year, it was probably shortly after Director Smith started with the Township that those conversations were happening.
In the last DDA board meeting, that they did discuss talking about the, not putting up the concrete walls again, but also they did talk about lighting, you know, what kind of lighting they were going to go with. And they did also, you know, it was reiterated that anything that happened after the Ford Road Boulevard or what we need to start planning is, will be in conjunction with this board. So we did talk about that, but there were no details other than that.
Excellent. Yeah, okay. You know, yeah, I'll just, you know, I, I, yeah, I, I've got some, for, for historical context for the two new board members and for anybody playing along with us at home. The, the DDA has essentially lost three of the, of its captures that it's historically had. And with each one of those captures, losing them has seen a substantial reduction in its budget. And, you know, we had, we aligned the village and provided a, a way to provide, I think, half the income they lost with the last loss of a capture. And they've had to become a little bit more modest in their budget. And so that's kind of the history behind that.
Were, were you wanting me to speak on something, Wendy?
No, I, no, unless you're prepared to. I, I didn't want to put you on the spot.
I mean, the little knowledge I have is, you know, I know the DDA is pretty autonomous from the Township. I mean, they're truly an arm of the Township, but they have their own, there's a public act that oversees and regulates what they can and can't spend their money on. But I do know just from previous conversations, and I know that the DDA board has changed a little bit too, but they are wanting to work with the Township in regards to what that streetscape looks like. And I know that they're very invested in the lights and looking and see, what is that final product going to look like? And they're, they're somewhat waiting on the final design too. So they see how much right of ways are taken away, where lights need to go. But definitely would, are, are open to work, want to work with the Township. Meaning the board.
Oh, right. Well, and, and I know you and Amy Hamilton are huge when it comes to interfacing between the board and the DDA.
Yeah. And I think one of the more recent conversations has actually been a joint meeting to talk about the streetscape. Because we're getting to that point where we'll have to pick some of those things out and decide what is, what is the future Ford Road look like after the boulevards and.
We've already started mentioning more indigenous plantings, things like that, you know, because the water bill is very high on that road. Last year's $120,000. So there's things like that.
Have the director seen the, the document from the planning session at all?
I know.
Okay. Cause one of the things we, we discussed was, I believe was, you know, trying to find a way to have more native, more native plants when it comes inside that, that area. I have seen, obviously the water bill and the mowing bill there. And so if, you know, what kind of came out of that organic process of the board working together was trying to see, yeah, more passivity in our parks, but also kind of, and it should come as no surprise, given supervisor and embracing of kind of the greening, if you will, of not only energy and not only technology, but also this idea of landscape. And so I had sent a document to the board of some work that had occurred on the Telegraph Boulevard in Bloomfield Township where they had put in some, they worked with the Alliance of Rouge River Communities and put in a, some native streetscaping there. It looked pretty good. And I also saw some, some done in Bingham Farms that looked pretty good too. So, you know, it's, it's being done and it's, you know, but part of the beautiful thing about zero scaping is, is you don't have to put in irrigation systems to water it. And it can be done classy. It can be done and it can look nice. If it's done right. You know?
Yep. So that was actually, we did talk about some of the planting at the last DDA meeting also.
And one thing to think about though too is long-term, right? Because I, I recently saw a map of the grow zones, projected grow zones in Ameri, in, in North America by, by 2050, which believe it or not, is not that far off. And to see the shift in what plants are going to grow where based on global warming or climate change, it's pretty drastic. And we are very beneficial. We're pretty beneficial being where we are. But even still, it will change what plants grow where and things like that. So that might be something to think about too, is projecting kind of what that landscape would look like over the next two or three decades. Do you go that route? I mean, anyway.
Oh, I agree. I agree. So we could schedule something to meet with the DDA to start discussions about that. Is MDOT, I think we, they wanted to speak to MDOT also and kind of see what the plans were. So we, you know, we invited them that last time, but I think they wanted to ask more questions. Okay. Great. Any other questions? Wendy, did you have anything else? I'll go ahead, Michael.
If we do have another surplus, what, what would be the intention? Would we, would it be, would it be to put it towards OPEB? Would it be to put it towards pensions? Would it be to put it into fund balance and carry it forward? Will we have more stability around budgeting? Would it come before the board? What's, how's that work?
So typically what I have done in the past is I go to the supervisor with here's, here's kind of the situation that we're in and give a few options, you know, we could, and the pros and cons of, of what we would do with those. Obviously it's a, going to be an ultimate board direction. It will come before the board before we make any of these payments. If we decide to put more money into the pension, if we decide to recommend putting it before, into the pension, we would bring that before the board. You know, we typically in the past, you know, we have leadership meetings and we would talk, kind of vet it through the three full-time electeds to kind of have a plan on what the three full-time electeds are comfortable with bringing forth to the, to the rest of the trustees. So in the past, you know, we balanced out the fact we knew we had these large CIP plans coming up. And so we, we said, all right, well, we know we, we want to have a little bit of money. But, you know, it was a very conscious decision to say, cause at first we said, well, we're, we're just going to use our fund balance to pay for the capital. Well, to borrow money, it was pretty cheap. So we decided we wanted to borrow money, but then use our excess surplus to pay down pension costs, which are occurring, incurring interest at a much higher rate than we would pay debt for the capital. So we typically weigh those things out as well, just to make that determination, what makes sense for us and what direction are we headed for the, you know, in the future. But I would envision if I had to make a guess right now, I would recommend that we pay down our pension costs. Maybe, maybe throw another million towards our, our OPEB. If, you know, depending on where we are, we already have a significant amount of bond proceeds that we still need to spend on our capital. So issuing more debt for capital right now isn't right until we can use what we've got. Cause we, we borrowed that to be used for a couple of years. So if I had to look into my crystal ball right now or kind of an educated guess, that would, that would be what I would suggest. Now I need, need to see where the final numbers come in, but I know just alone with police and fire, you know, they got about two, over $2 million between both of them together from the state grant to reimburse salaries for the month of April of last year. So then, and I know general fund finished very well is what, very well this year as well. So I would, I would envision a pretty healthy recommendation to pay down legacy costs, pay it towards legacy costs. But that'll be, I, again, I would envision that to be in the next couple of weeks too. Maybe not this next meeting, but the one after that.
That's right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else? Did you have anything else, Wendy, that you wanted to add?
No, I, I just appreciate everybody's attention and questions. It's been, it's a long night and it's not easy to listen to numbers. So I appreciate people's attention and.
No, very good presentations. Thank you. Did any of the other directors want to add anything? Any board members?
Well, I know I've just kind of finished out the meeting, talking a lot and I apologize for that. The treasurer and I don't typically go over our budgets during this, this period. You know, for 2022, we, we model based on a, for my office, a midterm election. And we budget one additional May election. There's some discussion about attempting to change that in the legislature. And if that does happen, we will obviously amend the budget to remove the budgeting of that additional election. And we did factor in an increase in the price of postage, right? As people and for forms and for printing, because people are choosing to vote absentee now, which as long as we are forced to administer an election in the precincts exactly the way we currently are and have the increase, we will see an, in absentee, we'll see an increase.
I don't know why.
There you go. I resumed it. Got to let the people at home hear this. And so, so yeah, so until, you know, which is interesting because states that like do universal vote by mail, Colorado, Utah, Washington, Oregon, they actually spend substantially less on their election because they don't have to run precincts. They, they run voting centers, which is a little bit cheaper because 91% of the people that vote, vote by mail. And that, then you see the reduction occur. We don't, we don't have that reduction because we're doing both. But, um, so anyway, we factored that in. One thing that, that is hitting our budget this year, you know, the, the game for elections changed substantially after the 2016 election. One was a, a refresh in equipment we brought on and we spent a lot of money bringing in equipment. And the state had, had negotiated a five-year freeze on the maintenance agreements for all of that equipment. Well, the, that bill is coming due. We are coming up on the five-year changeover in the 2022 budget. And so, because we, we received that, 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 that equipment in, in 2017. So it's a sizable increase to my budget, but it speaks to kind of the change in elections. We went from the older machines, which were, they were standard analog scanners that anybody could operate to digital scanners in the precincts, high-speed tabulators in the, in the basement, down in the absentee counting board adjudication networks. We have two separate closed network servers that don't attach to the internet. So the equipment itself, it's like we went from a horse and buggy to a hovercraft. And as a result, it's, it's, it's a sizable increase in the cost of, for those maintenance agreements. And we'll be having those maintenance agreements for the next five years until there's probably another equipment refresh, which, which will occur unlike the township, which does four-year inventory cycle on, on laptops. It needs about 10-year inventory cycle if we're lucky. And that's if the fact were to pass legislation allowing for money for that. Because again, it, it costs probably $400,000 when all is said and done for all of the election equipment to come in to the township. So we would not be able to absorb that in our budget with our, with our means. But that's one thing that's hitting in 2022 is the increased cost with those maintenance agreements. And we also see increases in printing, publishing and in postage.
Thank you, Diane. Did you want to say anything about your budget? Other than what you did earlier?
Yep. No.
Okay.
You know, we, we did do the bi-monthly billing and we do have a lot of people who've signed up for the e-bills, which has decreased our postage a little bit. But I think as next year goes on, we'll have more and more people signing up for the e-bills, which will help with our postage and printing.
Oh yeah. Okay. Yeah, that's true. Thank you. Any board members have any questions? So I want to remind you that tomorrow is the Canton State of the Township. That's at noon. You should have been sent a Facebook link for that. It's basically all virtual. So we recorded it. We'll just give a little introduction and introduce all of you via your pictures. And we will have, be there. And then on Friday, remember is the Board Director Manager Strategy Meeting. That's going to be at the summit right now. Also to let you know, I mean, just to let everyone know, so as of last Thursday, Friday and Saturday, 1,250 residents were vaccinated, Canton Plymouth and Plymouth Township residents. Our staff are currently contacting 4,000 residents on the waiting list to be vaccinated in March 9th, 10th, 11th at school craft. So we hope to clear that waiting list and then start gathering more. So that, I mean, Wayne County is helping us do that. So that is a good program. Just to let you know, also there are 16 COVID variants in Wayne County right now. Canton has two of them. And we know that there are restaurants that have been opening at 25%, but if you do drive by, you could see that there's a lot of people there. So, you know, people are still staying socially distanced and masked because the numbers are starting to creep up a little. So we know people are getting anxious and want to get out, but be careful in the restaurants in terms of overcrowding. Make sure you keep your distancing. All right. Well, anything else? Kate?
Um, we're going to do public comment, right?
I was just going to ask.
Thank you.
It's on the agenda.
Thank you. Um, do we have any public comment? Don't think so.
Maureen here.
Yeah, Cheryl Maureen.
Buddies.
Been patiently being in our attendees. Okay, great. Do I have, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Someone please second.
Support.
Thank you. Cork Seagulls, can you please take roll call on the motion?
Let's do it in reverse order this time.
Oh.
I had to say I before you said my name, if it was truly reverse order.
Slaven.
Aye.
Seagull's eye. I'm Hudek.
Aye.
Kenguli.
Aye.
Foster.
Aye.
Borninsky.
Aye.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Have a good night.